Good morning. Welcome to the May 19, 2020 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Due to the evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. The meeting can be viewed on local cable charter and the Spectrum Cable Channels 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandalc.com, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. I think so now you have it on top of the screen. Please don't call in advance of the agenda item. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during this special meeting. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda for Tuesday, May 19, 2020, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Tuesday, May 12, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
One, Finance regarding Budget Study Session 3, Measure S Discussion COVID-19 Budget Contingencies, Discussion of Budget Reserves, Citywide NGWP, Police and Fire Overtime, Authorized Positions Including Hourly Part-Time.
Thank you. City Manager Yasmin Beers.
Yes, good morning, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council. As the clerk read into the record, we are here for the third Budget Study Session for the 2021 fiscal year coming forward. The agenda and the slide deck that is before you is slightly different in terms of order of which the items were read into the record. So this morning, we'd like to respond to some of the inquiries from council that we were able to pull together and provide that information to council related to the number of authorized positions that we have, including hourly employees, contingencies related to COVID-19 in terms of the requests that council had in terms of what furloughs may look like, discussion of citywide reserves, we're going to talk citywide as well as GWP, police and fire overtime, and ultimately wrap up the discussion this evening on with Measure S to get some feedback from council in terms of your thoughts about what the next fiscal year looks like in terms of expenditures of Measure S dollars, and answer any questions that you may have. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like to ask Michelle Flynn, Director of Finance, to take us through the slide deck, starting on Slide 3.
Please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Welcome to Budget Study Session Number 3. So here we go. Slide Number 3, this is the view of authorized citywide positions, so our full-time equivalents. Council had requested to include hourly full-time equivalents on this chart. The third column over is what you are used to seeing in our full-time, just authorized full-time count. And so what we did is we added the second column, which is hourly full-time. The first column is the total authorized full-time, and then on the side, the far right, we added the vacancies and the full-time filled positions. You can see that we didn't include the earlier years that we normally show council where we had the high of 1,999 authorized full-time positions, and that was in fiscal year 2005-6. That's because we didn't have good data to provide you with the other columns there, so we just cut it off where we knew we had the good data from 2009-10. The low in 2014-15, as you can see, is across from 1,783 positions, and that's total full-time equivalents. And then our hourlies fluctuate quite a bit. We did, in this timeframe, add the ambulance operator program. That was in 2012-13. We also added the One Glendale After-School Program in Community Services and Parks, and that increased our hourly count for that program over a couple of years. In the later years, library was able to increase their branch hours and central library hours as well, so that added back some hourly positions, as well as an increase in the summer pool program at Pacific. So that did increase some hourlies in there. Overall, we are down 173 full-time equivalents from 2009-10. That's over the 10-year span, and that represents about 8.6%. The next slide is basically the same information, just presented in a graph.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
When we say hourly, how many hours they work? There's no average?
They work a variety of hours, but what this count does is it equates it to a full-time position.
Oh. So then what has been changed? Like in 2009-10, we had 178 authorized hourly worker, and 2019-20 is 341. So if they're equivalent to 40 hours' work, so that's, we doubled that.
Correct.
So we reduced 150 from full-time, and we added 170 hourly. So nothing's changed?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as I mentioned, during this timeframe, we added the ambulance operator program. That was about 40 hourly staff. That's included in that increase. The One Glendale After-School Program is about 16. The increase in the library hours is another 15, and the pool summer hours is about another 15. We can't account for all of the variations. And again, these are budgeted hourly positions, just like our full-time budgeted. They may not get filled, and it all depends on what the departments can use and how they utilize those hourly staff. But they do fluctuate quite a bit based on need.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Could you just run through that list again? I wasn't able to get that. The list of new programs that have generated this increased take count.
So the ambulance operator program was added, and that was about 40 hourly staff, 40 full-time equivalents. The One Glendale After-School Program is about 16 full-time equivalents. The increase in the library hours for the branches, as well as central, is about 15. And then the summer pool hours increase is about 15.
Thank you.
Slide 4 is basically the same information as I mentioned, and it just shows it to you in a bar chart. Again, the hourlies do fluctuating, the majority of how we utilize them with the add-backs of different programs and the increase in different areas. Slide 5 provides to you a salary step advancement deferral and what those estimates would be. Salary step advancement is built into our budget, and it basically is for employees who have not yet reached their top step. That represents about one-third of our filled positions currently. The salary steps are not automatic. They do have to be earned by the employee. They are performance-based. And as we've indicated before to council, this is an MOU item, so it will require a negotiation if we were to defer the salary step advancement for this upcoming fiscal year. The total citywide cost on this, for salaries and benefits included, is 1.7 million, with just over $1 million of that in the general fund.
Michelle, can I ask how this breaks down across the different departments? I'm assuming this includes everyone, police, fire. Correct?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Kasakian, yes, it does. It includes all departments, and I have the number of employees as well as the dollars if you're interested in any of the departments, unless you want me to read them all out to you, I can tell you that.
Well, I don't want to read them all out. I just think it will be helpful to see them, and if we can get a copy of that, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
And also the public. Thank you.
We can provide that, too. Slide Number 6 gives you the estimates of potential furloughs, whether it be a one-day, a five-day, or a 10-day, and the 10-day would be equivalent to a two-week furlough per year. These include employees in certain classifications. We had to exclude certain ones, for example, sworn. Positions are not included in this calculation. Anybody who would be deemed essential or first responders, certain positions that would directly impact health and safety of our residents as well as businesses. And we did talk with the departments to...
Yes, one second.
I have a question. Sorry, Michelle.
No worries.
I want to go back to Slide 5, and just so I'm clear, that the salary step advancement is included in our MOUs. If we were to cancel those salary step advancements, that number would be the savings to the city, the 1.714.
Correct.
Million?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to...
After a meet-and-confer process, and if we came to a resolution through that process, those are the dollars associated with that.
Those are the potential savings if there's negotiated agreement.
Correct.
Okay.
For fiscal year 2021. So back on Slide 6. As I mentioned, there are certain positions that are not included in this calculation. Those were deemed essential. We had to pull them out because they would not be able to take a furlough. And all departments have dealt with various reductions across the various years. We've consolidated work programs, increased span of control. Generally, departments have been doing more with less over time, and employees have shared in different cost savings measures, including paying part of their pension and increase in their share of their medical costs, as well as deferring COLAs. So the overall cost savings or estimate for the 10-day furlough would be 2.87 million across the whole city. The general fund would realize almost 1.5 of that. And again, just like the salary step advancements, this is a negotiated item with all the affected employee associations.
And, Mr. Mayor, I ask for this also in terms of a breakdown by department as well as, and also I should have asked this for the former slide, based on classification, management versus employees, the GCEA classification versus GMA.
Okay, Mr. Brotman.
Oh, yeah. Could you help me understand a little bit this one-day, five-day, 10-day? What would the furlough be if it were, let's say, one-day pay period? What would that equate to?
A percentage?
No, I mean, would that be a 10-day? Would that be what?
One day per pay period would basically be 26 days.
Would be a 26-day?
Yes. So it would be about 2 and 1/2 times that amount, the total amount.
Okay.
And that would pretty much equate to one month.
And it would equate to what percentage reduction in pay?
10-day is about a 5%, so it would be about 15?
But it's one day out of...
I'm sorry, about 12 and 1/2.
One day out of 10, right?
It would be one day out of 10. We have 26 pay periods in the year.
Right, right. So it would be 1/10th, right? One day out of every 10 days.
Right.
That's 1/10th.
About 12 and 1/2%, I believe.
Why not 10%?
Well, the 10-day is about a 10% reduction. So we take 2,080 hours, and it's roughly about 5%. So I'm giving you rough estimates.
But I'm missing something. One day out of a pay period is one day out of every 10 days, right? So wouldn't that be 10%? There's something else?
There are other things rolled into that, such as the benefits, which are consistent, I mean, your benefits for the year are your benefits. Your pension is going to be your pension, right? So it's not just salary savings.
A quick calculation.
It would be 10, I mean, obviously, if you work nine out of the 10 days, you have a 10% savings, but there's other load factors in that which make it not directly linear to the number of days worked.
And we're also on a 980 work schedule, so one day is not necessarily equivalent to an eight-hour, so it's a nine-hour workday, so we have to convert it to hours. So I'll do the quick calculation for you.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Yes, she's trying to answer your question.
Yeah, I know.
After she is ready for it, you may ask.
Okay.
So it's 234 hours out of the 2,080.
Hours out of 2,080. Okay. And just so I understand, in a situation like this, would benefits be impacted? I mean, I assume, you know, health benefits don't change, sick days, I mean, would other benefits remain the same, and would pensions and the formulas for pensions remain the same, or would those change?
What we would pay to PERS would be different because that's based on what the employee is earning. So in essence, it's a pay cut. So if you have a reduction in pay, then certain benefits follow.
Right.
Including what we would pay to PERS, what the employee would pay to PERS, ultimately what would be factored into their formula as far as what their pension would be when they do retire, yes.
Okay. But as far as medical, of course?
That would not change.
And other kind of accrued, you know, vacation, sick days, would those be affected?
No, they would not.
They would not? Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, next.
All right. To respond to the questions on reserves, Slide Number 7 provides you with citywide reserves. These are numbers out of our June 30, 2019 CAFR, so these are as audited. The top portion is our governmental funds reserves, and that includes the general fund and then all other governmental funds, which is mainly our grant funds or special revenue funds. So you can see our total reserve in the general fund is $125 million as of June 30, and that includes the various buckets of our charter reserve, the Section 115, both of which are under the restricted category but can be spent for their designated purposes. And then we have our assigned fund balance, which is the portion of Measure S that resides in the general fund, as well as the unassigned piece of 57.5 million. On the bottom part of the chart is the proprietary funds reserves, and that includes the electric and water, all other enterprise funds, as well as the internal service funds. And the electric and water do have, in their unrestricted categories, their various components of operating reserves and pay-go capital, rate stabilization reserves, et cetera. And Mr. Zern can explain those in a lot more detail if you need that.
Excuse me. Can you give an example of other enterprise funds?
Yes, other enterprise funds include Sewer, Refuse, Verdugo Communications.
Okay, thank you. There's, I guess, one of my colleagues have a question? No? Okay, let's go.
Oh. Yeah, I'd like to...
Councilmember Najarian.
If your question is right on these reserves, I'll defer to you, but mine's a little bit more tentative.
Okay, mine is just clarifying.
Okay. Councilmember Brotman.
This is the first time I'm seeing, well, you know, last night, it's the first time I saw them. We talk about our reserves percentage, the 30, the 25 is our kind of agreed minimum.
Correct.
And so how is that calculated? Off of which number is that calculated?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Brotman, that reserve is calculated off the general fund charter reserve as well as the unassigned portion. So those two numbers.
So that would be the 57?
57.5 and the 30.7.
And, oh, and the 30.7?
Correct.
Okay.
The charter reserve is the requirement for our charter where we have to set aside 50% of our estimated property taxes. It can be spent on anything that we need to spend it on, but it is a legislative action, so we do have to put it aside in a restricted category. And it is part of the total that we calculate for the policy that council has set for our reserves.
But we can dip into that.
Yes.
That's part of our rainy day fund, basically.
Absolutely, yes.
So that's 50% of property tax receipts. Okay. And we don't, and the assigned, that 7.2 million, what is that?
That makes up for the general fund, there are two components. There is the portion of Measure S that has not been spent, that is assigned for Measure S programs within the general fund, as well as a small balance remaining for economic development when we folded that into the general fund. So we have those categorized in the assigned category.
Okay. And again, the Section 115 reserve, and I apologize, this is, I'm still coming up to speed on this. What is that?
Section 115 trust was set by council. We put aside money to pay for future costs of our PERS.
Oh, okay.
So it's held in a separate trust only to be used for that purpose.
Okay, I remember that.
That was 20-some million dollars that we put aside?
26 and 1/2 million dollars initially, and council also approved, third quarter, 5 and 1/2 million dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
That 5 and 1/2 million has not been invested yet, based on what has happened with COVID, and will be invested when things settle down a bit.
Do we, I'm sorry, one more. Do we have a fixed formula for how we contribute to that?
Not at this...
Or do we appropriate it each quarter, or?
Not at this time. The conversation we had at third quarter, councilmember Brotman, was our first attempt to start having the conversation regarding, the initial investment was large, and the conversation that we started at third quarter was, well, actually, we started the conversation last budget cycle with the intention of looking at what each of our quarters looked like, and decided if the quarters looked well, and when we're closing the books for the previous year, and if there are funds that are left over in terms of fund balance under expenditures, could the council make a determination at that time to set aside some percentage? And I had put out the percentage of 50%, 25%, depending on the policy direction of council, so that we become kind of used to and disciplined about setting aside funds for the obligations that we have in place.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, councilmember Najarian.
So I'm not sure this is the best time to raise this, but, you know, in the past few months, we've been in quarantine, and I've spent a lot of time gardening, creating a garden. And I see our efforts at creating the budget very much like creating a garden, decide which flowers you want, which fruits, how large it's going to be if you're going to cut back. But every year in the garden, there's a weed that grows, and I think it's important that we remove that weed at this time. That weed is the concept and proposition that we leave PERS and go into some other type of retirement plan. So I'd like to pull that weed out. We haven't talked about it. If any of my colleagues at this point think it's wise to have a discussion about leaving PERS, I think now is the time to have it, before we adopt the budget. This is our last meeting before the public hearing, and then we're going to be voting on it. Personally, I think that the idea of leaving PERS is a weed. It sprouts just about this time every year, and it's important that we pull it out so that we don't hear about it any further. So this is for my colleagues. If any of you think that we should be leaving PERS or want to make that argument, now is the time to do it. Or if you want to request information on leaving PERS, we've had this years before. Like I said, it's an annual weed that grows in. It grows, we got to pull it out, or at least address it. If anyone's interested in leaving PERS now, I would like to say speak now because I don't want to discuss this at some further point, either before or after the...
Councilmember Devine.
Devine?
Yes, please.
I would be, yes, you know, councilmember Najarian is absolutely right about this. I think it's time that we investigate and get the facts out there of what our obligations would be and what kind of an impact it would make on our city and our budget and our employees. And so I would second that notion, motion.
Did you?
So I guess, is there, I know we have the information. We've done it every year.
We do, we do.
Yeah?
And I'm not sure if my colleagues have that information, but I'd like them to get that information to see for themselves what the ramifications are.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kasakian.
I understand the issue of addressing it. I just don't understand, I mean, to say that we ought to pull this as a weed or, you know, speak now. I do think that, you know, we should, we can and should all agree that the growing pension obligations and the pension issue is an issue not just for Glendale, but for the state as a whole. I mean, there's been countless articles just in the last week about what is going to happen with the state's budget amid year budget revisions from the governor. And so I don't know, councilmember Najarian, if it is a either-or proposition. And quite honestly, I think that, given the scope and vast amount of knowledge and obviously in your case, experience on this council, sometimes this is still something that is a little hot up of a level for us to quite understand. What I, I think that what I'm hearing from councilmember Devine about having an opportunity to explore this, if I can build on that and say that, you know, maybe it's something that we should have an independent group of professionals, a blue ribbon commission, if you will, study this and bring us back their ideas, I think that I would support. It could be one, like the ones that have been put together in the past, like a charter review committee, and others where we can have citizens in Glendale, professionals in Glendale who have a better understanding of finance, of such programs, of pensions, include a few retired employees if we have to, to study this and bring back their report to us, their white paper as to what are the proposals and opportunities and challenges that we face as a city.
So is that, councilmember Devine, is that what you're offering?
You know, I don't know that that's necessary. I think that there's enough information out there. I've attended conferences about this and workshops, and I don't know that that's exactly what we need, but if my colleagues think that that would be appropriate, I'm not opposed. It's just I think it's unnecessary. But like I say, I'd be willing to go along with that if my colleagues agree.
Okay, councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I strongly support the recommendation. I don't know if it's a motion yet, but a recommendation of councilmember Kasakian. I actually have notes in front of me because I was thinking the same thing, and I was going to suggest that we set up some kind of a, blue ribbon panel is a good way to call it. We each appoint people, maybe a couple people, or we can figure out how we want to, you know, impanel this, but I think we should bring people in from the community with staff. We should look at the big picture. We have a pension obligation that is getting larger, and we've been kicking the can down the road, and I think we need to get our heads around it. We need to get the community to understand what the choices are, what the implications are of different ways that we may address it. I think it's a very, very important thing to do. Today is not the day. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say, I'm either going to speak about whether we should leave PERS or not. I need to do a lot of homework myself. I think it's a very, very important thing to do. Today is not the day. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say, I'm either going to speak about whether we should leave PERS or not. I need to do a lot of homework myself before I'd be able to have that discussion. But I really do strongly feel that this is something that would be good for us and good for the community.
Are you thinking about a lay commission or a commission of financial experts?
I'm thinking of a commission where we draw people out of the community that have financial expertise. We have a lot of very talented people in the city who I think would be willing to contribute their time for free. I don't think we'll have a problem finding people. I'm not talking about just picking somebody off the street. I'm talking about people that really can bring a level of expertise to this question.
I'm just trying to understand.
That's my thought process. I certainly don't expect a lay person board. I think it should be people with some background and understanding of this. Otherwise, putting lay people in charge of trying to figure this out is the same as us trying to figure it out, right? Except for the fact that we've got.
No, I would disagree with that.
More exposure to this.
One sec.
That might be a little extreme.
Councilmember Najarian?
But I think the city attorney has an issue.
For the purposes of discussion, to kind of throw it out there, I think it was appropriate to, to raise the issue, but if you're going to actually have a discussion about establishing some commission or committee, that issue has to be agendized at a separate meeting.
Well, may I?
So I would, I would suggest, I mean, obviously, more than two, more than two of you have expressed interest in doing this, so staff can bring it back with further direction from council.
So, okay, this, we can bring it back next week or something?
No, we can bring this back at a later date. We, we couldn't be ready to bring this back next week. It would be after budget adoption. And council can direct us to have a, a panel of some sort, a commission of some sort that comes together and provides information, a white paper on this very topic. I, I would, I would agree with much of what Councilmember Brotman said, except for we've kicked it down the road. This city has done a tremendous amount of work in, in terms of dealing with our pension obligations, more than most other cities. And you all have heard me on my soapbox in terms of the percentage that employees pay in this community toward their pension obligations versus other municipalities. And, and we can look at all of that, and the ultimate goal is to have something that we can all accept and afford. That's the, the part is the affordability piece, and we all understand that. And so we welcome that because this is something that comes up invariably, and it comes up by way of, I think, a, a discussion from the community perspective at times whereby it is a negative, unfortunately. And as I've told city employees throughout the years, and I've been doing this, as you all know, for a long time, never ever be ashamed of the wage that you earn. We're providing a service to the community on a daily basis, and based on the services that we're providing and based on the people that we hire in this community for this city, that wage is commensurate to the work that you do, and don't ever be ashamed of it, no matter what anybody says from the community. We can explain what those costs are. We are under a system that some of us did not choose, and we can explain it the best that we can. And so if, if council wants us to go down this path, and as the city attorney said, I think the interest is there. We'll bring a report back, and, and you all provide us with direction in terms of what that committee needs to look like.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, as long as it's, seems like, well, it'll come back on the agenda. I support that, to look into an expert commission or blue ribbon or whatever you want to call it. But the point is to deal with it, to address it at the very highest level of analysis and to hopefully have some communication with the public that do not understand the system and do not understand what our options are. And I think if we deal with it now, I guess it wouldn't hurt if it comes after the budget is adopted. It's not going to affect our budget at this point, but, but let's deal with it. I mean, let's deal with it once, I want to say for all, once and for all. I'm not sure it'll be, that might be optimistic, but let's deal with it at least now, and we can all see, see the information and maybe get a recommendation and all that. So.
But do we, do we need to make a motion?
We have direction. There's plenty of you who are interested in it, so.
And I would, could I just add, one thing I would just say, yeah, I don't think we need to rush this. If this takes six months, that's fine. I think this is something that we should take our time and do right, and it's not going to affect, it's not going to affect this budget season.
Yes.
You know?
Mr. Kasakhian?
I just want to say thank you. That's exactly my thoughts as well. This is something that could take a lot longer, and I don't know as well, Councilmember Najarian, if this will be the once and for all solution, but certainly it will be, I think, a step in a, a direction that will hopefully give our community assurances that we are not leaving any stone unturned. And I know that staff does work very hard. They do earn the pay that they receive, and we have to also look to what the financial future for the city is in terms of a legacy that we leave behind. And certainly, we're not alone in this problem. This is a challenge facing every single city in California. It is a statewide problem. But hopefully, with this, we could possibly, potentially, as we have in other measures, as the city manager mentioned, in cost sharing, et cetera, be a leader as well. Thank you.
It's okay. We go to Ms. Flynn.
If, if, Mayor, I have a question on.
Yes, okay. Councilmember Devine, yeah.
Yeah, I have a question on the reserve. What, can you tell me, Michelle Flynn, what, how much is in the water and power reserve and the electric fund?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Devine, on the chart at the bottom, you'll see the electric and the water funds. In total, the electric fund has three hundred and thirty-six million, and, and water has almost one hundred and twenty-seven. This is as of June thirtieth. However, as I mentioned, that unrestricted portion is broken up into various components, being paid with capital, the operating reserves, contingency reserves, rate stabilization, et cetera.
Okay, so looking at this, and what is the total in the electric fund? I'm sorry, I'm looking at my, my phone, my iPhone for this report. I can't really see.
No problem.
So can you just give me a number for the electric fund?
The electric fund total, including all categories, is three hundred and thirty-six million.
Thirty-six?
Yes.
Okay, and the water fund?
One hundred and, one hundred and twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
It's not all cash, no. That is not all cash.
Okay.
Next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Slide number eight shows a tri-city comparison of all the, what we consider spendable general fund reserves. Spendable includes everything that's in the restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned categories. As we just looked at the chart on the previous page, for Glendale, what that means, it's the charter reserve, it's the Section 115, it's the portion of, of the unassigned that is under economic development, as well as the Measure S funds and the unassigned. So looking at those categories of spendable, spendable reserves, Glendale has fifty-one point four percent, and then you can see our tri-city comparison with Pasadena and Burbank as well. And this, again, is as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So that fifty-one point four, that's the thirty-five percent, or I can't forget the number of where we are now, thirty-six?
Roughly, yes. We're right around that thirty-three, thirty-five percent.
Okay, that excludes the, the reserves that we've set aside for PERS, right?
Section 115.
Section 115, so that's why this is, it's principally those two numbers that are.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Brotman, yes, you are correct. This includes that number, so that thirty-three, or roughly thirty-five percent that you always see us report on does not include the Section 115. This does. It's the only way I can do a comparison when I'm looking at CAFERS across all cities because of how cities designate their funds. So this is the best comparison that I can give you as far as what is considered spendable in the general fund.
And, and have Pasadena and Burbank done the same thing that we have done with the Section 115?
I know Burbank is looking at it, and I cannot recall if Pasadena has done it or not.
I don't believe that Pasadena has done that as of yet, and Burbank is looking at it. That is correct.
Okay, but those funds that we've set aside are essentially, are they restricted, or could we conceivably pull them back if we needed to, if we had a shortfall?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Brotman, those funds are designated to be utilized only for pension. So you could not pay pension out of your normal unassigned bucket or budget and pull from that reserve to then pay for it.
So essentially, it's fungible?
Yes.
Yeah.
You, you just pull from that, and the unpaid, what you would otherwise paid for the pensions would be a general fund.
Right, but we've done it just to maintain that discipline and to, conceptually, we understand that we're setting aside something for that purpose. I understand. Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Next.
There were some questions with regards to police and fire overtime, so the next few slides, we'll, we'll look at police, and then we will also look at fire. So on slide nine, you'll see only the general fund overtime for police over the last five years, and it is a budget-to-actual comparison. The actuals are higher for both police and fire due to their vacancies that they carry on a regular basis in order to have that constant staffing that they need to have. They also need to staff when people are out on injuries, or what they call IODs, injured on duty, and other factors. Both chiefs are here. They can definitely answer a lot more of the questions you may have with regards to the details on, on their staffing. Moving to the next slide, this gives you all funds, so this is not just general fund for police, this is all funds. This includes our joint helicopter air support with Burbank. It also includes some grant funds, and this will give you as well as the portion of the reimbursement. The timing on the reimbursement in some cases in the current fiscal year is a little delayed, only based on grant monies coming in or whatever other billings that we have that have, the, the amounts have not come in yet.
I'm, I'm sorry, may I ask a clarifying question? I'm, I'm not quite understanding this chart, slide ten. Could you, all funds overtime, so it's, it's basically, you're taking slide nine and you're adding an additional category to it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Brotman, slide number ten gives you the general fund overtime that you saw on slide nine, and it also includes all the other funds that police has under their umbrella. As I mentioned, joint helicopter program with Burbank is in there, as well as grant funds. The chief can get into more details if, if you'd like.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Brotman, so when we go to general fund, or when we go to all funds, two things, you'll see the reimbursements there for filming. So we have, when companies come into town to film, if they're required to have police officers, we provide those officers, and then we are reimbursed for those costs. There's an hourly rate, so that's reimbursement. The other primary driver of it is grant funds. So when we're doing officer traffic safety grants, could be sometimes urban area strategic initiative grants, sometimes cover overtime. We have some other smaller grant funds that come in for participation with, like fugitive task forces that cover our overtime. That's all in here. So you'll see those, you'll see those numbers higher than the general fund, but those are where we are reimbursed for our overtime.
Okay, so if I may, so the, this is, slide ten then, is the overtime we're paying out, but some of that money that we're paying out is being covered by grant funds and by this helicopter joint, I don't know what to call it, but I know it, I know what it means.
The, the biggies are more like officer traffic safety, so when you see, when we put out and we're doing traffic enforcement, and we're doing one of the officer traffic, I mean, it's not unusual for us to have, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in OTS grants. And so that's not general fund money that's being spent, it's, it's put into a separate fund, and so it doesn't impact, if you will, our general fund where we use for, for primary policing services. That's an above and beyond, and that money's reimbursed to us.
Okay, but it does give us a sense of the requirements that we have to provide staffing over and above the current full-time employees that we have on staff, right? And so that, I guess, is because, I, I know I've heard you speak in the past about the difficulty filling these positions with qualified individuals, the injuries and, and all that, and I don't know how you get through that, and how you, because ideally, you would, you don't want this, right?
Well, there, there will always be a certain amount of overtime because we have certain contractual obligations. So when an officer makes an arrest or issues a traffic citation, if that person goes to court, the court doesn't care whether it's your work day or your, or your day off, the court issues a subpoena and you have to show up. We're obligated to pay the officer for their time when they show up. So as we do certain level of enforcement activity, there is overtime involved in the follow-up and, and bringing it through the judicial, the judicial system. So there will always be overtime, but where you see the, where, where you see we exceed what we plan on budget is two things happen to us. One is we have people get hurt, and, and, you know, actually, looking at that, that's something we're looking at because that has averaged in the last few years sixteen to eighteen people, full-time equivalents, being out of the office because of job-related injuries, and then, of course, the vacancies we can't fill. I will never miss an opportunity to tell you, finding qualified people and hiring the best and the brightest, to do what we do with the number of people that we have is very difficult. By the time, of those who actually show up in our testing process, by the time we're done, we're hiring about one, one point three percent.
Councilmember Najarian?
So here's the way I look at overtime, chief, both chiefs, actually, and, and tell me if, if I'm wrong, and city manager. Let's assume we're forty hours a week short for coverage, whether it's due to injury, whether it's due to vacation, whether it's due to increased workload. Is it, is it better for us as an agency to pay ten officers, four hours overtime that week, to make up that forty hours, or to hire a new officer?
Oh, I'm going to.
With everything included, with the?
I'm, I'm going to look at Michelle, but I will tell you, I believe now, based on the benefit load, it's almost a wash.
It is a wash.
It's almost a wash in terms of whether we pay overtime or, or whether we hire an additional officer. For me, hiring the additional officers is the ability to give people time off and, and time away from a very stressful, a very stressful job. But in terms of what it actually costs us to provide the service at the current, at the current rates, it's almost a wash.
So the only, then, sort of internal costs is the training, is the selection, is the, you know, orientation of, of that new officer? And that's assuming that that forty-hour shortfall is a continuous, continuous event rather than just a special, you know?
That it's a constant.
That it's a constant.
That's a constant, and, and not all of this is a constant. As said, you know, injuries within the department will ebb and flow, depending on, you know, incidents that occur or, or what happens. You know, vacancies work on it, it ebbs and flow. We'll see with the current economy how that, how that all plays out in terms of our ability to recruit and fill, and, and fill positions. So it's not necessarily a, a constant, and then there will, as I said, there will be those other things like court and incident, or, or major incidents. So when we have major public events, you know, we're there and we're staffed. We have major unplanned events where, you know, we've had people, you know, celebrating, if you will, in our streets, a velvet revolution, and, you know, bringing people out to be able to facilitate that and make sure that, you know, we, that it is safe for our community, you know, those are unplanned events, and, you know, those take additional time, and so we have to be prepared to do that. And so making sure we also have a core group, and so where the cost may be a wash, but also making sure that our agency is adequately staffed because we need to have a number of people to be able to deal with those types of things, and you cannot add water and create a police officer. Creating a police officer is an eighteen-month process.
And we're continually hiring and looking for, for good recruits?
We are continually hiring. We graduated three from the academy last Friday.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Next, please.
Last slide on police, we'll give you a tri-city comparison with Burbank and Pasadena on our population, number of officers, officers per one thousand residents, as well as crime rate per one thousand residents. And you can see, this data is as of calendar year twenty nineteen. You can see where Glendale falls in comparison with each of those parameters.
One question.
Mr. Brot?
Could we see the dollars associated with this, you know, total costs, not just total officers per population, but total costs of our policing work and our fire work? Yeah, that would, that would be helpful, too.
And, and along with that, can we see the breakdown if it's possible to receive it from all the other agencies, and I'm assuming it will be, of command staff versus the officers, the rank and file folks?
And, and just for clarification purposes, Councilmember Kasakhian, in terms of staffing ratios and, and what the organizational structure looks like? ratios and what the organizational structure looks like?
Sure. I mean, if that's what it is, I'm basically, I want to know how many officers versus how many sergeants versus how many lieutenants versus how many captains? And I'm assuming everyone has a chief, but they may have a deputy chief, as we did at one time.
What do they call that? There's a term of art for that. Management versus-
Ratios.
Management.
Your, your span of control and, and the ratios that are in place in terms of that span of control. But we can get that information. We'll provide that.
Thank you. And then also, I hate to bring up the chief, I know, if, I'm assuming he's still in the room, but I want to go back to the previous slide before the breakdown of the cities. So chief, taking a look at this and the previous one, these bars tell a story. Please explain, if you can, what that story is, because we obviously see increases in overtime between what we've budgeted and what the actual was of 4 million, 3.2, and then there's a significant drop of only 9 million so far, or 9 million. So what does this slide, what should it tell us, what should it tell the residents and taxpayers?
Okay. I'm sorry, I just need to clarify. Which slide are you looking at?
The slide that's up right now, slide 10. And I get to slide nine, but if I pick slide 10, it's a more accurate representation because it also includes the reimbursements.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of council, Councilmember Kosakian. Yes, so what you're seeing is what is budgeted overtime in the blue bars, and then what you're seeing is the actual overtime that we, that we've spent. And so what I will tell you is the department comes in below its budget every year. But what we do have is we've never, we have not been able to fill our vacancies of, or fill our vacant positions 100% at all. As I said, hiring people is a very competitive process. Every department is looking to hire very qualified people, and so that's become extremely difficult. And so we have those, those vacancies. At the same time, you know, police work also can be dangerous and officers get injured. And so those injuries create vacancies within the police department, but we have an obligation to our community to continue to provide a high level of service and, and safety. And so in order to do that, what we do is we take some of those vacancies and some of those vacancies created by injuries, and then we backfill that with overtime so that we make sure we're putting the, the service or providing the service to the community that, that they expect. And so while you, while we exceed our overtime budget on a, on a yearly basis, what you'll see is we do not exceed our, our regular, our overall budget on a, on a regular basis. So it is, if you will, the ability for us to be able to provide safety services to the community.
I, I get that, and thank you. I mean, that was essentially what you had said earlier, but why the peaks in 2017, 18, and 2018, 19, and then why the drops? I, if you look at it, it rises and then it drops, and I'm trying to figure out what happened in 17. Is there something specific in 2017, 18, and 2018, 19 that we need to be aware of?
So actually, when I look at-
And also, the difference, and then going back to it, by the way, in 2016, the large gap between the budget and actual. That's what I'm interested in.
Yep. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Kosakian, so looking at, at some of this, it's like, so if I, if I look back over those years, we had about 16, the equivalent of 16 officers injured in 2016 and 17. That increased to 17 the following year, 19 the year after that, and then 19, 20, it dropped back down to 16. And then also looking at, you know, our, at our, at our vacancies, our vacancies have been running between 10 and 12. And so those peaks are driven by, by injuries and by people missing from the organization that are being backfilled.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, fiscal year 1920 represents only nine months of actual data. It goes through March of this year, so we still have three more months that that green bar could go up a little bit more.
So basically, we'll be the same figure, almost.
We had the Velvet Revolution protests in Glendale in 2018, so, events like that add to overtime.
And the Grayson rallies.
As I said, there's always a, there's always an unplanned event that, that comes up somewhere, usually in a, in a community, and obviously, a police department is, is prepared to address and adapt to those. And we just sort of, if you will, roll with what happens and, and adapt as, as we go.
So what I'm trying to gain is, you know, I get it that we're gonna have unforeseen issues and unforeseen needs, but if there is this issue of, there is a pattern, so to speak, in some of this, we should be able to look at it, identify it, understand it, and address it. And that's what I'm trying to find. And I apologize for these questions, and this may seem redundant to my colleagues and to staff, but I do think it's important for us to understand, besides just looking at numbers and graphs, to understand what's the story behind these numbers and graphs. What is it that causes these figures to look the way they do? Because I look at, you know, the reimbursements and they remain relatively steady, yet there's other fluctuations. And if that means we have a relatively similar number of officers, anywhere between 16 to 19, that are injured on duty, I'm sure it's not the same officers, it may, obviously, it's different officers and different circumstances, it would be helpful to us to understand what causes those as well.
And Councilmember Kosakian, I would agree. We, we work with workers' comp to try and, and figure out some of those to see if we can improve officer wellness. If, if this helps a little bit, it's sort of the bigger picture, probably 20% of our overtime is driven by, by requirements to be in court. Another 20 to 25% right now is being driven by the need to backfill to maintain a, a basic level of, of staffing within the organization. And then some of the special details and public events, and those still drive about another 20%. And then, obviously, if we have an officer who's involved in an arrest later in the evening and, you know, paperwork needs to be completed and so forth, then that drives out some of the, some of the rest of that.
Okay, thank you. I just want to ask a question from Ms. Flynn. Go to slide 11, please. We have, this is great, we say per thousand of population, we have 1.2 officer, Burbank has 1.5, and Pasadena is 1.6. But how about dollar-wise per officer? What's the figure? Because-
That's what you asked for, right? The per-dollar expenditure for police.
So-
We will get that comparative analysis.
That should be added also, so this way, the comparison will be right comparison, rather than saying we have less officer per thousand.
Mr. Mayor, we will provide that to council.
Thank you. Let's go to next chart.
Slide number 12 provides you the similar data for the fire department. We'll start with the general fund overtime budget to actual, going back to fiscal year 2016, 17. I'm sure the chief will say it's a very similar story to police here, whereas fire department is, is under budget every year. They do have a constant staffing model that they have to maintain, and that includes filling in for vacancies, as well as injuries and other, other time off for their staff. The, again, the, the actuals for fiscal year 1920 are for nine months, ending March 31st, so they do still have a little bit more to go for the rest of this fiscal year. Slide 13 gives you all funds overtime and reimbursements, and this includes all the fire funds that they manage. There are some grants in here, as well as any of the filming issues, or filming activities. The mutual aid as well is, is all part of this. And this is also, the delays in reimbursements do occur. We don't get those in immediately as we incur those expenses. And they do, there is a slight delay, so usually by the end of the fiscal year and all the, when all the reporting is in, we will have those numbers for 1920.
Mr. Brot.
Yeah, perhaps the chief can come and, I don't want him to think we don't love him as much as police. So if he could come and-
Appreciate that.
And talk a little bit about, you know-
Him telling the story.
The, just kind of the context of some of this would be great.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council, so similar to the police department, we have 50 firefighters on duty each day. Of those firefighters, when one is injured or off on vacation or off on any sort of leave, we have to hire back behind them. We, that's what we call constant staffing. We have a very, very slim organization when it comes to our sworn members. As all of you know, we operate on three shifts, so each day, there's A, B, or C shift is on duty. 50 people on duty each day. We have 166 total sworn staff. Of those 166, nine are chief officer staff. So when you look at the number of people that we have available to fill those vacancies, there is no extra people to fill behind a, a member who is off duty for any of those reasons. So the, the depiction here and the story, as, as was requested to be told, is that our overtime goes up and we, we go over our budgeted overtime each year because of the number of vacancies. We carry anywhere between, on average, six to 10 injuries each day. Those vary in severity. As all of you remember, several months ago, January 18th, we had the car fire where two of our firefighters fell into the basement of a fire. Both of those firefighters were injured. One of them required surgery for his injuries and was off a couple of months. We have other employees who, who are off for back injuries, shoulder injuries. We have one currently who's off for ankle injury, all injured while on duty. So those positions require us to pay overtime behind them. The vacancies, right now, we have nine vacancies within the organization. We are interviewing next week to fill those vacancies, hopefully for a September start academy. Each of those are holes that require us to fill behind somebody on overtime. So I hope that, that paints the story. And then the, the reimbursement, as Ms. Flynn said, the 1920 reimbursement, we expect that number to, to be in the ballpark of the last few years, about a million-dollar reimbursement. We budget $750,000 for our mutual aid response each year, the last two years, this year going forward, and last year. And when we go out to these large fires, like our firefighters did multiple times, times last year, the Camp Fire being one in Butte County, one of the most destructive fires in California's history, our firefighters were up there, we are reimbursed for that cost. So we send our firefighters that are on duty, and then we backfill those firefighters. We call in off-duty firefighters to come in to fill reserve resources to bring our number back up to our 50. We pay them overtime and then we bill that back. So that costs us no money. We actually make about an 11% administrative fee on that response. I hope that answers the question.
Okay, thank you. Next slide.
The last slide for the fire department is showing the number of firefighters serving per 1,000 residents, and this is for 2020. Glendale's in the green bar at .8, Burbank and Pasadena in the blue bars, these, again, tri-city comparison.
Thank you. Is there a question?
Question. Does this include our ambulance operators in this?
No, it does not. Our ambulance operators are considered non-sworn employees, so it does not include the ambulance operators.
How does Burbank and Pasadena deal with ambulance?
They, they have firefighter paramedics on their ambulances, so they, they have sworn employees on their ambulances. And one, one important depiction on this also is that we are also the busiest of the three. We respond to more incidents, more emergencies than our two partner agencies do with less firefighters per capita.
Thank you. Okay. You have a question?
Yeah, if we could also get the same that we discussed, yeah. And I guess, how do we do this, other than the fact that, I know we're awesome, but, I mean, how do we, how do we maintain such a low, you know, ratio?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Brotman, thank you for pointing out that we're awesome. Yes, we are. Our firefighters are the best. I, I mean that, all kidding aside, they're extremely committed individuals that show up each day and do this job in this city bravely and courageously. The, the biggest reason we have been able to lower our number was in 2012, we, like our partners in Burbank and Pasadena, had sworn firefighters on our ambulances. That program was converted to an ambulance operator program where we use EMT, non-sworn employees, at a much lower rate, at a non-safety retirement, to, to operate our ambulances, thus putting our firefighters on our fire engines. So our fire paramedics ride on our fire engines, nine fire engines in our city, all with two firefighter paramedics on each. That is how we've been able to lower our numbers. We, we basically, we had 30 less firefighters through that transition. We took 30 firefighters off, 10 per day, three shifts, off our, our five ambulances at the time, reduced that number by 30. That's how we, how we do this.
And I think an important note on that is that the firefighter association, our, our union, they're the ones who came up with the idea because they wanted to be a part of the solution in terms of the budgetary issues that we were dealing with at the time. And so with the individuals who were at the helm, with the GFFA at the time, along with management, those conversations ensued. And so I don't want to, in any way, not specify the reason why that came to the table, to the forefront, is because of the GFFA and the conversations we had at the time, to make those reductions.
Councilmember Najarian. Chief, you know, we're looking for answers and we're, you know, we have to remember that these aren't machines cranking out, you know, so many widgets per, per hour. What role does morale play in bringing us these great productivity numbers for fire as well as, as a police department? Morale? And how, how can we, as city council, help that morale to be strong and, you know, reliable?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Najarian, it's a great question. I would like to think that the morale of our organization is high. I, I think that our firefighters are, they are a great group of individuals that, as I mentioned earlier, come to this city each day, protect our citizens, as was seen by everybody across the country a couple of days ago, just down the street in Los Angeles City. What those firefighters did is what our firefighters do each and every day and, and are prepared to do every day. To answer your question about how morale, I will tell you that there's a lot of uneasiness about these conversations each year when it comes to-
Budget?
Budget.
Furloughs and cutbacks and things like that.
All of those things cause, as you can imagine, it causes across the city a, a lot of uneasiness with our employees. And when, when you, you know, we continue, as the leaders of the organization, continue to ask our firefighters to do more and to do more with less, as is obvious by this slide number 14. And our firefighters aren't complaining about doing it. They do it with a smile, they do it proudly. But when these conversations continue to come here and, and the, the questions are asked about how we can do more with less, that does take an impact on morale across the organization and across the city as a whole. And so to answer your question, I think that, I, I don't want in any way say that, that I don't think our firefighters feel they're appreciated. I think they, they do. And I think that the support from our community is outstanding. As, as you've mentioned, when you were in the mayor's seat a few months ago, the, the program that we put together for our seniors, where we were delivering groceries to our seniors during this pandemic, was 100% voluntary. These firefighters are already working a minimum of 56 hours a week. They were volunteering to come in on their days off to deliver that service for our community. That's not done without a committed workforce that shows up ready to do anything that's asked of them each and every day.
Well, let's just, chief, look, both chiefs, you know, these are things we have to do as a council when we examine ways to, to save expenses, and it in no way, no way denigrates our appreciation for their hard work and the productivity, clearly, the productivity. I mean, we're trying to figure this out. How much is that per, per capita, the expense? How can this be? We're looking for answers, and I think the morale of both departments and their productivity and outs, both on and off the clock, are really exemplary. So we, we really appreciate that. Don't get nervous. This is where they say, watching, you know, a sausage being made. This is what the, this is what the residents have voted us in to do, the question and review. But, you know, we, we support everything that you do, and we're very proud of, of the public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're here.
Okay. I think we will recess, or based on mine, we will break for 10 minutes, and we will be right back. This is- Okay. This is budget session number three. Today is May 19, 2020, and we will continue to discuss about Measure S. Before we do that, I want to say during the last budget study session, I asked staff about furloughing our employees for one or two days each month, and what that process would look like. I would like clarifying that I was not suggesting we move forward with anything at this moment, but this question was simply a proactive approach to understand the process and impacts associated with these types of alternatives because we know the situation can get worse. That said, I would like to ask staff to provide a report on a monthly basis to understand where the city is in terms of estimated revenues. We need to identify anticipated revenue gaps and shortfalls that might come as a result of decreases in economic activity. Looking at these trends more frequently will help us recognize the extent of the disruption and can signal the need for a change in policy and direction going forward. So with that, we go to Measure S discussion, and we go to City Manager Yasmin Beers.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajanian. Members of the city council, we're going to go directly to Ms. Flynn, who will provide you with the kind of 10,000-foot level in terms of Measure S on Slide 15, and then we'll get into some details by way of possibilities and a menu of options for the city council to consider, and of course, any other items that you may think of. With that, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Slide 15 will give you the picture. You've seen this during our first study session, I believe, and it provides you the financial picture for Measure S. The top row there gives you the revenues, which is the sales tax, the 3/4 cent that the voters passed, and 1819 actuals of $5,184,000. None of that had been appropriated, so that resides in the assigned fund balance category for Measure S. The fiscal year 1920 budget, the original budget of $30 million, it's been since revised down to $22,140,000. Most of that adjustment came because we overestimated that initial budget. Some of the reduction is as a result of COVID-19 impacts. And then finally, the projected revenue for next fiscal year of $22,170,000. In the middle part of the slide, you'll see the expenditures and the various programs that council authorized during last budget season for fiscal 1920. Rental Rights Program Administration, Housing Rental Subsidy Program, First Time Home Buyer Program are all under Community Development and Housing, I'm sorry, Community Development Department in their housing unit. The Year-Round Aquatics Program, as well as the Ice Rink, was under Community Services and Parks. And then we had $20 million set aside for affordable housing, land acquisition, and 3.5 million for fire station seismic upgrades. Total appropriations for fiscal year 1920 amounted to $29,848,000, of which, in the third column, we're projecting $13.8 million to be spent by the end of the current fiscal year. So if you look at the bottom of that third column, we're projecting the ending balance for this fiscal year to be 13, a little over $13.4 million. Taking into consideration the revenues that we're projecting for next fiscal year, as well as the carryover money for the existing programs and the new funding for the existing programs, we're projecting a remaining balance for next fiscal year of $18,800,000.
So affordable housing, land acquisition on 2020 to 21, what's that, $7,888?
Mr. Mayor, that is the remaining balance of the original $20 million that has not been spent. This does not include any new monies that council is going to decide on today. This is just only what is remaining. So $12.1 million has been spent, the 7.8, almost 7.9, is what's remaining. So we're just carrying that over into next fiscal year, as of right now.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
Divine.
Yes, Ms. Divine, please.
Yes. Does this include the acquisition of the two properties?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Divine, it does include the one property acquisition, the $12.1 million. The other was made out of the various affordable housing funds that city manages.
And so when we, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, when we get to further slides in terms of the breakdown of each of those sections, you'll be able to see what the expenditures look like. And Mr. Lanzafame, who will be on WebEx with us, will be able to take you through that as well.
Thank you.
There's no more questions on this chart than I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lanzafame, who will cover the series of next slides for all the various affordable housing and different programs. I believe he's on WebEx.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for accommodating me. I got a little non-COVID cough, and I just thought it would be better to do this by WebEx. These are the programs that are funded by Measure S and that we want to touch on in this presentation. Michelle, can you advance for me? We wanted to give an idea, this goes to the conversation you were just having, about some of the recent activity that we've had in developing affordable housing. You know that you recently went to the grand opening of Vista Grande Court, 66-unit rental project. The project is 100% leased. We also just finished Habitat Lomita, which was six new homeownership units done in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. More to current activity, excuse me, we did purchase the Pioneer site from AT&amp;T, 2.8 acres, $13.1 million. This was used using old redevelopment dollars and tax allocation bonds to affect that purchase. Tobin World Purchase on East Broadway, 1.6 acres, that's the $12.1. We used Measure S funds for that. We think both of these projects will yield us close to 4, 350, 400 units together, and we will be coming to council in the next month or so with designs for those. Slide, Michelle. You saw the $7.9 million remaining. This is the dollars in our other affordable housing funds, together about $18, $19 million. While we acquired the property, we do think that there's maybe four or five different phases between those two projects, to which we will have to contribute additional cash in order to win the tax credits to build those units. Staff would see using these funds to make up that cash need, but it won't happen this year. It may go in over one or two years into the future. Next slide, please. In the decision point for the council, to make another acquisition, we think we need somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 to $12 million, and then again, $4 to $5 million additional cash in the project to win those tax credits. That is something that, certainly that the additional monies needed to win tax credits will not be for two or three years from now. But if there is an acquisition that we find coming up shortly, we would like to be in a position to move on that, should the council and housing authority wish. We do think that there may be some opportunity, much like after other disasters, where people will want to sell their property as part of their plan going forward. And so there may be some opportunities for the housing authority. Not to sound vulturous, but there may be opportunities. The option for the council is to pre-designate some of that funding now, or just know and hold that in reserve so that when something does come up, there are dollars available to go purchase that property. Either way, staff could get to the council pretty quickly for appropriation. It just is a matter of saying we want to put this much in our minds, say that is for a future acquisition. There are other ways besides development to help with the affordable housing issue. Want to discuss a few of the programs that staff has been thinking about, see if there's any interest by the council, and we could go forward and develop those. I would say that they are immediate, more immediate programs. There are a couple other situations that we're looking at. Do you recall, the city became a member of the Cal CHA Financing Authority? That is a program where taxes and bonds are being issued to acquire property that you then convert to affordable, and you're able to do that because of the lower financing costs. Similarly, we've just been made aware and have a meeting later this week with a group that has funding from insurance companies that are interested in affordable housing. The cost is lower, so it does result in a subsidizing of rents. The idea behind that would be that the property is acquired, it is then leased to the city, and the city then can set the rents that it wants. The acquisition cost allows the lease rate to be such that you hit about a moderate income house loan. The council could put more money to it and drive those rents further down and hit lower target rates, lower income target rates. But that's something that we're still looking through, and once we have a good handle on it, we will bring that back to the council for consideration. Michelle, can I have the next slide?
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Councilmember.
Mayor, thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Do you need us to decide whether we want to pre-designate or to hold this funding in reserve now, today?
It is a decision that we would like, probably to appropriate it. We know that we have it, especially if you authorize the city manager to negotiate those as they come up. We would always bring the acquisitions back to council, but we could just move faster if it's appropriated.
Okay.
I don't know that if you don't appropriate it in this budget, we can still move quickly, just not as fast and as nimble.
So your choice is to pre-designate it rather than to hold it in reserve?
It would be, from my perspective, we would know generally what the council was looking at in terms of acquisition dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yasmin Beers.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, just to fill out what Mr. Lanzafame was saying, absolutely pre-designation of whatever the thoughts of the council are in terms of how you want to spend the money moving forward is important for us to know because I think it sets the priorities for the coming year. And so, once we go through the slides, and I think your ability to be able to see what you have, we have the ability to plug it in to the spreadsheet and so that you know where you're putting your funds ultimately, and how much you may have left over that you may want to designate into certain programs. And so pre-designation is really an easier way for us to understand what those priorities are on Measure S moving forward.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next.
So staff has looked at some programs that we could utilize Measure S and help with affordable housing. Some of them are ideas that we have been thinking about for a while. And now, as we look at a COVID situation and people needing assistance, some of those programs fit nicely. They are designated by an asterisk, and they'll show up again later in the presentation. I would say to the council that all of these, again, are ideas. We have them developed in concept pretty well. We need some continuing detail that we would have to put with it. What we're looking for here is, is there two or three of these programs that you might be interested in pursuing? We would look at, none of them have any staff attached to them, so we couldn't do them all. But we may be able to fold some of these into existing program units and have that team do administer both programs. From Emergency Non-Recurring Rental Assistance Program, this is a program where somebody finds themselves in a situation where for a month or two, something happened and they just need help paying the rent as opposed to losing their apartment. It could be a layoff, it could be an illness, it could be a death in the family, where somebody needs to make some arrangements, and you just find yourself from month to month, and something has interrupted that revenue stream from month to month, and you just need a month or two of assistance. Again, we think this is a program that would fit nicely with COVID response. If we were to do 1,000 of these types of grants, assistance amount anywhere between $500 and $3,500, that would be an annual cost of $500,000 to $3,500. And I've got a slide at the end of all of these programs that show them all together with costs. The Low Income Family Employment and Rental Assistance Program, this is a program that we had, we had used, we called Life Ramp, we had used with old redevelopment. And the idea behind it is for a low-income family that is looking to better their position and their ability to earn more. And what the program will do is provide assistance in rent while they're getting some training, whether it's vocational school, or going back, or even just taking the experience that they've gotten in current jobs and then transferring that to a higher-paying job. The whole idea behind it is to use training and education to better your opportunity for income and ultimately better your position to afford your housing costs. This is a program that we worked before in redevelopment. We worked in conjunction with the Verdugo Job Center to help with that training and job search, as well as economic development. So three different areas of the organization. 500 is what we had projected for that assisted annually, with a $500 a month grant, total assistance for the year, $3 million. We would run that, think that the program runs for a year or two, maybe up to three years. The Low Income Student Rental Assistance Program is similar to the first program for students that find themselves, again, in a situation, something may have happened with parents where they find themselves away from home and they need, excuse me, they need to just have a boost, a little bit of help to pay their rent until the situation can stabilize. Typically, we're looking at low-income families or even students. Many students are on their own, working their way through college. And again, they may have anything from assignments come up where they have to take less hours at work, or, you know, again, a car breaks down or something on an independent basis where they need help with that. The Attorney Fee, I'm sorry, Rental Assistance of Low-Income Seniors and Families with Developmentally Disabled Children. This is something that we started thinking about after the discussion at Vista Grande, where we were, I'm sorry, not Vista Grande, with the Monthly Housing Subsidy Program. We were trying to determine whether this would be a category of renter to fall into that program, to be eligible for it. Ultimately, the council opted for disabled Ultimately, the council opted for disabled resident themselves, not one of their children. But we do find that there's additional costs that go along with raising a developmentally disabled child, and as you become a senior and your earning potential is less, that could become more and more of a burden, a burden is not the right word, but more and more of a difficulty to meet that expense. The same with families, a low-income family that does have extraordinary expenses in raising a developmentally disabled child, this is somebody that, this is a group that we would focus this program on. We had looked at maybe 300 of these assistants at $1,000 a month, annual assistance on that, $3,600, I'm sorry, $3.6 million. We had looked at a program, thought of a program for Attorney Fee Assistance. We'll talk about the Rental Rights Program in a minute and our ability to help moderate or mediate, if you will, a resolution to a problem between landlord and tenant. But sometimes it requires the tenant to actually take some legal action. If they are of low income, their household is of low income, they may not be able to afford that, and so this program would offer some assistance.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Counselmember Najarian.
I am a licensed attorney. I do handle landlord-tenant cases for both sides. Does this conflict me out of a discussion on this matter?
You would be eligible for the program, yeah.
I mean, I'm an attorney. I take payment. Would we, I mean, are we saying only do it to, like, neighborhood legal services, or they'll have, like, a voucher to pay attorneys? Because...
That question I posed to Phil, what's the mechanics of it?
You know, if the council's interested, we would look at mechanics. We were thinking, Mr. Najarian, of a specific firm that we could have under retainer and refer people to. It also could be done as a voucher program, and there's programs that we're looking at that may use a voucher. So, if the council's interested, we would go and put that etching all into the program. But we were looking at something either way.
I'm just concerned, I don't want to speak to the merits of that, but I'm just concerned that I may have a conflict, let's, if there's any discussion on paying attorneys...
I think at the point we have that discussion about that particular program, you can step out and come back in later.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you may continue, please.
And then, finally, on this program, Multi-Generational Low Income Family Assistance. Here again, we didn't put an asterisk on it, but we may see families forced to live together, or they may be already in that situation, where grandparents are with children and grandchildren in one home. And the cost of a larger home to meet all those needs may be not viable given incomes. And so, this program would look at those, that demographic, maybe 100 of these assistants with payments of $750 to $1,500 a month. That is an annual assistance of just under $1 million to 1.8. This could be based on their need, is it short-term, or if the council desires, it could be ongoing and with a commitment for ongoing. Next slide, please, Michelle. Those, go back, yeah, those were mainly aimed at renters. We also were looking at homeowners and property owners, and if this were programs that we would assist and aid in with something in return. The Property Maintenance Funding, this would be for, really for maintenance, as opposed to a capital improvement program, which is the next one. But if a landlord could demonstrate the need for some property maintenance that either rents don't support that, or they don't have enough in reserve and may not, this program would provide somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 to help towards that property maintenance. Maybe 250 of these slots, annual assistance cost would be 1.25 to 2.5 million dollars. It would be a one-time payment for that landlord. On the Property Improvement Program, this would be a larger capital improvement where we're not just looking at some basic maintenance, but more of a significant improvement, excuse me, on this, maybe 250, I'm sorry, on the prior program, 750 to $5,000, this program would be 5,000 to 10,000. But on this, for eligibility, we would ask the property owner to reserve some of the units as affordable in exchange for this grant to do the capital improvement. That program, if we did 250 of those loans or grants, 5,000 to 10,000, 1.25 to 2.5. The Low Housing, Low Income Housing Incentive Program, this would be aimed at multifamily owners that would provide Section 8 units or homeless individuals. They would receive $500 to $1,000 of a one-time incentive to make those units available. Again, we haven't put the details to it, but maybe 250 of those grants, assistance amount of 500 to $1,000, and maybe that's $125,000 to $250,000. We don't think that there would be 250. Right now, we've got about, I want to say, now I'm guessing, I wanted to say there's about 100 landlords in our Section 8 program. And I know that if that's incorrect, Mr. Zolak will text me that, and if it is, we'll come back.
Phil, I'm terribly sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes. Go ahead, Counselmember Devine.
Are you discussing right now the Low Income Housing Incentive Program for Section 8? Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. Again, just a one-time incentive that we would make that payment to the owner in exchange for them providing units. Single Family Mortgage Assistance Program, this would operate, this would operate similarly to that rental assistance, maybe a one-time mortgage assistance where something has happened, a person can't make their mortgage, and not sure what situation they might be in, but it would maybe one or two months of mortgage assistance for them. Again, this may fall nicely with COVID response, as we develop that program for people that are out of work, that are trying to hang on to their home. Maybe 100 of these grants, assistance amount of 2,000 to $5,000, $200,000 to $500,000 a year. If we were, that would be for one month, if we were to allow for two months, because of the ongoing situation, we would just double that. And then, finally, Family Mortgage, Multifamily Mortgage, same idea, somebody that owns multifamily property that is providing that, and they need some help with their mortgage. Think as some of the bills are coming forward, both in the state and the federal government, to add assistance, this could either be a bridge to that, or it may be something that's not necessary because there are other programs available. But if the council's interested, we'll certainly develop those. So, this last slide kind of shows all of those programs together with their funding, and we can come back to that if the council would like to identify whatever programs that are interested in staff pursuing further.
Okay, any questions?
So, I have a question.
Yes, Counselmember Najarian.
So, Phil, I didn't see one other option here, and that's just split up the money to every household throughout the city, give everyone an equal amount to be used for mortgage or rent, for either multifamily mortgage, multifamily rent, or single-family rent/mortgage. If we're going to be fair about it, why don't we just whack it up, because everyone's paying into this fund? Just whack it up. Have you done those numbers?
No, we have not.
How many housing units do we have in Glendale? 40,000?
No, there's more than that. I think with single-family and ADUs, it's closer to 75,000 or 80,000.
So, if you gave everyone $1,000, that's 75 million?
Yes.
Give everyone 500, it's...
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-some million?
Thirty-seven million, 500,000.
Yeah. I'm just, you know, I'm just putting it out there, Phil, because I think my general, my general outlook on this is that we have to be equitable to all levels of the community, not just renters, not just low-income renters, but owners of multifamily, owners of single-family, renters of single-family. I'm just trying to find some equity in our discussions, so that's all. I just want to say that's what I'm thinking of at this point, equity to everyone.
80,767 housing units.
That's expensive.
Mr. Mayor and Council?
Yes, please, Counselmember...
Counselmember Najarian, I mean, you would agree that by giving assistance to the renter, you're also giving assistance to the landlord.
Right. You wouldn't double, right, right. I mean, you'd eliminate a double windfall for renter, and, but let's say, let's say you don't have rental property, let's say you're just a single-family residence. Yeah, you wouldn't want to make a double dip for a owner of a multi-unit, because presumably those rents would be, that stipend would be used to pay rents, so you wouldn't pay the renter and...
So, my thought process, or what I'm envisioning, is that the money, the renter applies for it, but the money, the checks are cut directly to the landlord. But that way...
That would be a safer way.
Like the Section 8 programs.
But, right, I have no qualm with that, but let's talk about the, how about the single-family homeowners? Are they not also entitled to relief, assuming that they're being pressed by this as well?
Sure. Sure, but I mean, I also don't know, I mean, to do it across the board to everyone in the city not based on need, may end up giving, you know, I get the sense of it, the, I guess, intention, but my preference would be to address those individuals who are in greatest need at this time.
I think that's the rub. Therein lies the rub, the administration and the evaluation of who is truly in need, and there's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's an issue. Who's to say a single-family homeowner trying to make a mortgage isn't in need? It would take a lot of...
Doubt.
It would take a lot of, I guess, inquiry and paperwork to document the true need, so. And who's to say that a low-income person is in need, because many have been unaffected, their incomes have been unaffected, if you're on pensions and SSI and DSI, some have had no impact at all in the recent virus. So, therein, I think that's the, I think that's the inherent difficulty in trying to administer this and to be fair in the administration. Just thinking out loud.
Well, I would, I would, thank you. I mean, to me, I don't know what being fair means. I think we certainly want to be helping the people that have the greatest need, and yes, the administration is difficult. That's why I think on the Rental Assistance Program, we've only been able to allocate a small portion of that. I understand we just started that process, I think, in January. But it's hard, but I think it's necessary, so I would not be in favor at all of handing out money to people that are, you know, living in nice homes, like myself, that are employed or have resources. I think that would be against what I believe in anyway. And I would, I could see us expanding some of these rental assistance programs. We're giving 300 a month, we could increase that, we could expand maybe the, you know, the eligibility guidelines, but I think if we do anything, it's got to be directed to the people, the low-income people who need it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if I may?
Yes, please, Counselmember Devine.
Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, Phil, Phil Lanza Fain, can you give me the approximate funding that you would allocate, I'm sorry, for the Life Wrap Program at 500 per month? Was that $500,000 for that program?
No, it was, the annual cost for that, at least as we looked at with 500 assisted annually, $500 a month would be...
Three million.
Three million.
Three million, okay. And for the student assistance, the LISRA, how much would that be approximately in the budget?
A million five, one and a half million.
Okay, 1.5 million to help, how many students? Let me see, it's 500, 250? Okay, all right, 250. Okay, all right, thank you so much, that's what I needed, the numbers, thanks, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we go to next slide, I guess. Come on, second, I'm sorry, Counselmember...
I'm sorry, Phil. One thing I don't see here, and I know we discussed it in another context, is homeless, the homeless population, and we have some funding, I know, to get people into hotel rooms, and we have, you know, project room key from the state, but I would like to understand, you know, if there's opportunity to do more, because we're still only addressing a percentage of the homeless that we have that are identified homeless. We also have a lot of homeless students that are in cars and in other kind of unstable living circumstances, and so I'd like to see if we could maybe consider doing more, maybe it's a matter of supporting some of our nonprofits that work with the homeless, like Ascensia and Family Promise and some of the others. I think that would be a worthy use of some of these funds as well.
Thank you. We go to the next slide.
If that is the council's direction, we can work with Community Services and Parks to identify some of those. I just didn't include them, because I was looking at housing programs. But certainly, we could do that.
So, you may continue now.
The Rental Rights Program is something that was actually introduced and adopted early last year. It is made up of three categories of protection benefit slash benefit. The Just Cause Addiction, it was, that was something that was adopted by the City Council in early 2000s, and it stood by itself as kind of the one protection. After almost two years of conversation amongst the council and the community, the City Council adopted the Right to Lease, which provides a lease for, everybody is entitled to a lease from their landlord. The idea behind this was to know... The idea behind this was to know what your living situation, what your housing cost was going to be for a period of time, at least a year. There are triggers then when options need to be provided, or if a tenant chose not to accept the lease, they could arrange a month-to-month. But they did have the, the benefit of receiving an offer to lease the property, again, to know how long, to know their living situation for at least twelve months, and then have more time to, once a, an option was presented, they would have maybe four months to decide, can I afford a higher rent? And if I can't, I need enough time to be able to find other living situations. That was the idea behind the right to lease. Finally, with that team relocation, it's a sliding scale depending on the size of, of the project that a person is renting, lives in and rents, and the number of years that they have been in that unit. But it provides up to six times the proposed new rent as a relocation benefit to help somebody secure other, other living situation, other living situation. The staff, this was, this program was staff with two analysts hourly and then a piece of a supervisor just to oversee that. They respond to inquiries, and they get about twenty walk-ins a month. And this is both, this is from both landlords and tenants, just trying to understand the program. We do education and outreach. We conducted the very beginning of this, conducted about eight community meetings. We've had two or three written pieces that go out. We appear on television, again, try and get the word out on this program, on these three elements of the program, to both landlords and tenants. Oftentimes, we enter into, and we call it mediation, it's more us being a moderator or a broker of a solution. We have, I placed for all of you, or sent you an email, a pamphlet that we did that has three or four case studies, where you get an idea. Somebody came to us and said, you know, during the rent freeze, I got, I got an increase, and it doesn't sound right. Our staff was able to then work with the landlord and the rest of the complex to have rents returned, new offers of a right to lease made, and/or relocation benefits. So this is, it's not formal mediation, more like a broker where we will dig into a situation and, and help either tenant or landlord understand that better. We track and maintain complaints, so that if we have a, a unit or a complex that is, has several multiple violations, we can then go back and address that specifically with that owner. We're about nine months, ten months into this program when we all went into a safer home. So the track record is very short of that. Similar to looking at the ordinance and seeing what kind of impact it's having on, on our housing stock and the rents with that. We were, we were going to commission a study to do that, and council at the time said, no, let's, let's try the program out and see how much we can track ourselves. That was, last year's budget was four hundred and forty-one thousand, a little under four hundred thousand for salaries and benefits, and then, and then the balance in M and O costs, mostly in printing and mailing. I would say that in, in addition to the rental rights program, this staff, simply because they're, they're trained on it and they're following it, they are also working on two other things. The rent cap that the state of California adopted last year is something that the staff is knowledgeable of. They track that. In fact, now it has gone below what our trigger is for relocation. Our trigger is seven percent increase, triggers relocation. The state's cap is now five point oh seven percent, I think. It was five percent plus CPI. So they're tracking that, and as people are inquiring, landlords are inquiring about the state rules, this staff can help them with that. In addition, the orders that the council has adopted for, for COVID emergency is something that this staff also feels and tracks and makes sure that they're knowledgeable.
I have a question.
Ms. Devine?
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you. Phil, can you please tell me that, again, break down that four hundred and forty-five thousand dollar budget, and you mentioned a salaried, full salaried employee that's included in that? Is that correct?
Yes, there's two full-time, council-approved, full, two times, full-time salaried employees. They're both at the analyst level, and then an hourly that works almost full-time to assist them on that. And then there is a piece of a supervisor just to, to have that. What we've found with this program, and talk a little bit about it in the next one, is, Mr. Mayor, if you'll recall, you authorized several positions for, for this program and the monthly housing subsidy program. What we've found is that there are a lot of things that, that overlap, and we're able to use the staff interchangeably in those programs. And that has allowed us to cut, or not fill, two positions and an hourly between these programs. So we're running it more efficiently by having them look at both.
Again, I understood, I was under the impression that complaints and violations and enforcement, mediation were being held in, being held, handled by the city attorney's office. Is that not correct?
We, we certainly consult with the city attorney's office, but really, the staff in the rental rights program is handling the lion's share of the day-to-day operation, where it's, it's more an education and explanation about the programs and how they work, as opposed to a flat-out violation. If somebody were violating, and I'll ask the city attorney to correct me, I think that we were leading that to a civil, a civil enforcement, to where the tenant had to take the landlord, had to take some legal action against the landlord. This at least provides some service from the city to help resolve that before they get to that position.
Okay, I, for some reason, I wasn't aware that we had rental rights staff that was on, on salary, and that was how, that was, that's the way we can channel complaints that we get to the rental rights staff, not to the city attorney's office?
No, it should go to the rental rights staff, and in fact, we have a, a website set up for this program that people can contact, and the staff monitors that as well.
And if I could just add, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Devine, oftentimes we do get complaints or questions, and they are referred to the rental rights housing staff. And our staff that was involved in the drafting of, of the ordinance will meet, you know, relatively regularly with that staff to go through issues of interpretation and how to enforce a particular provision. But then, you know, through the, through the time period that's, that's occurred since the adoption of that ordinance, that staff has become, you know, experts in applying it and, and providing input to resident, to both tenants and landlords on how, how it should be interpreted and how it's going to be enforced.
And so we have two full-time staff members and?
And an hourly, and an hourly staff person.
And that's four hundred and forty-five thousand? No.
It's, there, the, the salary and benefits is three hundred and, I just have my cheat sheet here, three hundred, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, and then there's about sixty-eight thousand dollars of M and O, which is postage, for the most part, postage and graphics.
But I think contextually, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I think, Phil, if you can describe what that staff does outside of just the rental rights. And I think you were, you're going there based on the fact that there was more staffing that was approved by way of Measure S and the new programming that was coming forward through the decisions of the council last fiscal year. But this staff has taken on also the monthly subsidy housing program and, and an array of other duties that I think is important to, to cover. We associate it with the rental rights program in terms of the staffing levels based on the approvals that were given. But through the experience, I think we have found that the other positions that council did approve by way of Measure S for these very particular programs, we did not have to fill, because the current staff that was in place was able to take on the different programs.
Thank you.
That is correct, and I, it, it really is, one of the analysts will oversee some of the work that's being done in the monthly housing subsidy program, that allows us to run both programs at the same time with less staff.
Councilmember.
Yeah, just briefly, I'm, I'm glad that we have staff there, but I didn't know about that. And many times, I've been trying to resolve these issues between a landlord and a tenant, and sent them off to John Tectalian and others. And had I known that there's a dedicated staff, it would have made, I think, some certainty and consistency in the enforcement and all that, so.
And our apologies for maybe not communicating that after your approval process last budget cycle. But when you send that information to John Tectalian, who's the deputy city manager, he then sends that off to the team that does this work. So he doesn't follow up on it on his own. He sends it to the team, and Cipan and his folks get that information and follow up, whether it's a tenant or a landlord issue, and then provide us with that information, and then we can provide that to the city council. And so that's been in place, and our apologies.
Do you have their names who are working on this now?
Phil?
Yes.
Do you want to provide the names of the staff?
Sure. Cipan Zadorian, Armine Hunanian, and Adita Gazarian.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Kasakian.
Thank you. You know, I think it's great that staff is working on, on this and, and trying to address these issues. I want to know if there was an effort made by the staff to study what other cities do with their tenant landlord issues. I know that Burbank has a landlord-tenant commission. I know a few other cities do. I know in Santa Monica, that's an elected one, and I'm not interested in necessarily going down that path, at least at this time. But was there any exploration to create a landlord-tenant commission to mediate these disputes between landlords and tenants, receive complaints pertaining to the adjustments or anything that's exceeding the guidelines established by the council? If not, I would like to, and it's not immediate for this time, but I would like to have staff, if I can get any council member to second this thought, to explore the possibility of a landlord-tenant commission comprised of both landlords and tenants, so we don't have these two groups, or what we categorize as groups, working, you know, in ways that seem very adversarial against one another, ultimately to come up with more harmonious solutions to some of the challenges and hear out some of these issues. That's one request. The other request I have is that, given what staff is doing, this team, to address these rental rights program issues, I would like to see, and I'd like to ask our housing authority chair if she would be open to it, to have a presentation, if that's appropriate form to do it in or to have it brought back to council, to find out, you know, from this team, what are the majority of issues that are coming up? What, how many of those issues get resolved? How many of them do not get resolved and what they result in? Having those statistics and figures would be helpful, and also would put a little bit of a, more of a context to this figure that we're, the dollar figure that we're asking questions about.
Okay, first, let's hear Mr. Garcia, city attorney.
Didn't have anything to add to that, other than on the note, on, I would note, and Mr. Lantefame, or can probably provide input too, on the issue of mediation, I can't recall specifically when we discussed the whole menu of options, 2018, 19, whether we had that discussion about landlord-tenant commission, but there was a substantive discussion about mediation, whether it be some process where there's a mediator that's hired by the city or there's a mediation program, that was part of it. The council went in the direction of doing the rental rights program, which involved the right to lease and the relocation ordinance. But there was some substantive discussion about mediation. I just can't recall at the moment whether we, part of that was to have a landlord-tenant commission, whether there was any discussion on that.
Councilmember Devine?
May, yes, yes, you know, I'm calling on my memory, which is not always the best, but we did have a conversation, and I think we, there was research done that we received that this type of a group meeting commission was not successful, that it really didn't resolve anything in most cases. And so that was why we took it out of the right to lease, or we voted against it in the right to lease, because the success rate was not really one that would support a, a commission like that. So that, that was our, that was our thinking at the time, and I don't know if it's still the same as far as the, the statistics or the data, or, but that was how we were thinking back then.
Sure, I mean, if I could just look at the notes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Brothman, one sec.
Oh, he, let, let.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to provide a second to Councilmember Kasakian's motion that we have staff look at this question of a landlord-tenant commission or board. I remember probably two years ago, when there was a lot of talk about rent control, the Glendale Tenants Union had a proposal for a board. I thought it was very well thought out, and we could look at that. And again, you know, look at, look at what other cities have done, look if it has been successful or not. And even if it's, even if you've kind of gone through this discussion, I think, you know, we've got two new people on council, so I think it would be, it would be good to do that again. So I want to second that.
Thank you.
What we can do is, is go back and, and see what we provided council in the past and, and update that information with what's currently being requested, if it wasn't included in the request previously. Of course, update the information and at some point bring a report back to the city council or the housing authority.
I just want to add that this, although I was not part of this discussion, I was listening to it, this was, was very much encompassed in the discussion of rent control. And I think that the state's decision to impose rent control takes away a lot of the issues that your typical landlord-tenant commission deals with. I think what we're talking about here is dealing with landlords who aren't familiar with the increase law and the, the relocation issues and all that, and who are addressed by our staff. So, you know, I, I think a landlord-tenant commission can just spin out of control in so many ways, but we'll have that discussion at another time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the next slide.
The, the next program that the council authorized last year with Measure S was our monthly housing subsidy program. It was a two-year pilot program that looked to address rent burden, lower-income senior households. You see the program parameters there, three hundred a month, thousand households, extremely low income, one of, they had to be Glendale residents, one of them had to be a disabled person under the definition that is allotted in law, and certainly rent burdened, demonstrating
And certainly rent burdened, demonstrating that burden. If I could have the next slide, Michelle? I guess, I thought it was here. We also had a preference for those seventy-five and older. And of the thousand, I think we had something like almost thirteen hundred applied that were seventy-five and older with a disability. We went through an open enrollment period, followed by a lottery process, a manual lottery. We did, we did select people in late January. The, we have done the data entry, the vendor setup with landlords. And we have started issuing payments. Where we got slowed down with the Safer at Home is working remotely. Many of the people that were selected in the lottery do not have the technological capability to be sending documents back and forth. There was in-person interviews where we could actually help with the piece of paper that we're not able to do by telephone or video conference. And then probably the most important thing is somebody could have put, brought their packet and then just brought it into us and said, "Here," and done that in one day. Right now, it's all going through regular mail. So there's a two-to-three-day lag time. If the packet's not complete, we need to get back in touch with the person, explain to them what's needed, have them go and collect it. I think one of the major issues that we're having with this is some of the agencies either aren't open to get some of the information that people need or they are working remotely and their process is slowed down. So we only have about, we only have ninety qualified. We think that through our, our interviews that will take place through the end of May, we hope to get a number, another twenty to thirty qualified and, and in the system so that by June first, we maybe have a hundred and twenty qualified applicants. We know we're working through packets on another three hundred in, in trying to get those processed as quickly as we can. This program is, has a remaining balance of three point nine million dollars. The way that, that this is going and, and the way that everything is staggered, we think that the carryover is enough to take us through next year. And then we would ask for appropriation in the third year to pick up the, the tail end of the, the second year of some of those near the end of, of the, the end of the list.
Excuse me, Mr. Landesheim.
Go ahead.
Why the projected remaining budget is three point nine million?
We, we had projected that, we said last June, last June, we thought that we would have everybody enrolled. The lottery process in setting everything up took a little bit longer. And now with our delay with COVID-19, we certainly won't get all one thousand enrolled in the program.
No, but you said.
So there is a lot of money that wasn't distributed last year that's carrying over to this year. It'll still be a two-year program for everybody.
I understand. But you qualified ninety people. Let's say hundred. Hundred by three hundred will be three hundred thousand, right?
Yes.
So how we came to three point nine million remaining? Then it means the budget was four point two million?
I, I want to say it was four point two or four point three million.
Why it was four point three? Because we said we want to help one thousand people with three hundred dollars for two years, right? That's seven point two million.
Right. Well, we only budgeted one year, so.
One year, three point six million. It'd be three point six million. Why we came to balances still three point nine?
We had, we had staffing in that as well. And that's where I, I said we were able to use some from the other program and we didn't fill that out. But we have a, a portion of our housing systems now manager that has to run all the technological part of this. We have a housing associate, an administrative assistant, and a CSR that work on this. And so salaries and benefits now, and again, remember, these are all unclassified positions. So when the program goes away, these jobs go away.
Okay. But still, I don't understand how your, the remaining balance is three point nine million. But however, we'll discuss it later. It doesn't make sense to me either. Okay, next, what's next?
I want to move to the first-time homebuyer program, another program that was authorized with Measure S money. We had a, a first-time homebuyer program when we had redevelopment and we were able to fund that. We still have some owners that are making payments on this. But the program lost its funding with redevelopment and so it went away. But city council brought it back to use with Measure S. The parameters of the program would be a seventy-five thousand dollar second mortgage loan. There would be a minimum five percent down from the buyer and then they could add the seventy-five percent. We had approved lenders that we were working with that would accept the program and, and understanding where the second was coming from. We had deferred payments on that second. And it, it was forgiven after forty-five years if the person lived in it that long. I don't think we have, or we may be coming up on, on somebody forty-five years since we started the program. But I don't think we have anybody that, that is, is forgiven because they were there for forty-five years. In the event of a, of a sale before then, we would share with the homeowner in the equity and then that would go back into the program to fund more loans. This has a full budget that was appropriated left. We just did not have the staff to stand this up. This did not have any staff attached to it. And so the same staff that was working on the other Measure S programs would be working on this. We, as I say, we didn't have it to stand up, so there's that full amount remaining. And the question is, council, are you still interested in a first-time homebuyer program? And if so, we'll carry that over. If you'd like to redirect those funds somewhere else, we can do that as well. Next slide, please. We now move into a little bit of the economic recovery. I think we were asked to look at some programs that we could use Measure S to help with COVID-19 recovery. We had started surveying our businesses. We did one, you all received the results of that survey. We, we actually got in, in less than a week, seven hundred and fourteen businesses that responded. A lion's share of those were smaller business, less than, than twenty-five employees. Of that, about forty percent have applied for some funding, but only nine percent have received it. I know that a lot of, there's a lot of frustration with the federal programs in the money going to, to bigger corporations, bigger businesses. Anecdotally, some that, that have returned those. We also looked at employers by size. This came out of the conversation the council was having about the emergency orders and should we, who should get deferred? Who should be able to defer their rent? What size business? And so we, we captured that. This is actually something from Dun &amp; Bradstreet. It was also, the same data was provided by the EDD, the State Office. What was very surprising, at least to me, is I did not realize the amount of small business that is under ten. That accounts for almost thirty percent of our businesses and people employed. So it, it, more than thirty percent of the businesses, but about thirty percent of the businesses is people employed. When we asked respondents to the survey, what's the single most important thing the city can do in helping you recover? Is funding, providing some kind of funding support. And then if it's not straight-out dollars, capital, some rental assistance, then get us open as soon as you can, even if we can only do a portion, a fraction, a percentage of what we were doing before. And we'll come back to that in some of the programs, some ideas that we have that, that may help with that. And then finally, provide clear communication and messaging on new guidelines. The, the frustration of the number of different agencies that are weighing in on this, from the federal government to the state government, county government, and then Glendale itself. We have tried to make that clear through our hotline and, and our interaction with business. But some have said that, that they would like even more clear communication, especially when we go to reopening. What are those rules going to be? Michelle, if I could have the next one? Some of the things that we heard during the, the emergency orders and shutdown of business, people, they're just, again, frightened of the uncertainty and the difficulty, or not frightened, frustrated regarding funding. And it shows in the amount that have applied and the amount that have actually received funds. Again, confusion with the different agencies. How do they interpret those? We have tried to help using the city attorney, consulting with the county, trying to clarity on those on a, on a case-by-case basis. And then now, one thing, again, is what are my testing requirements going to be for my employees once we start to reopen? Those become some of the common themes. Back to the survey, we asked, what are you most concerned about? That differentiated between what can the city do? This is what they were most concerned about. And that was COVID compliance and requirements. And a lot of this, if you dig through the raw data and the comments, a lot of this centered around personal protection equipment. How am I going, as a business owner? How am I going to procure that? How am I going to make sure that I have enough? How much will I need? That, that was a lot of concern expressed. Customer reconnection, they've been away for two months. How are we going to get back in touch with them? And certainly that's something that the city can help with in, in just some of our promotional and social media platforms. And then finally, money, capital. We're going to need that to get back on track. Some of the things that weren't talked about that, that, you know, we are anticipating, improvements that they may need to make to their, to their store or restaurant to allow for these new rules. If they do, building and safety may come into play. But we need to fast-track some of those and have a team dedicated just to getting that done so that they can get back open to business. So we're trying to think of as many different things as we can. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide? These programs, these are some ideas of programs that we had, that we've come up with. Again, like the residential, there is no staffing attached to this. We would use existing staff and, and draw on staff from the, the entire organization to help implement these. But we would know that it's on a, a shorter-term basis. But with that, small business recovery and assistance. In, in terms of these dollars, they were more of what we projected we might be able to afford and what might have some significant benefit. We were helping about with the micro grant program, the CBPG program that council approved. That was just over five hundred thousand dollars assisting a hundred and fourteen businesses. We could maybe assist another two hundred businesses, same type of thing, a grant of up to five thousand dollars. This personal protective equipment, this, this really could range from dollars to help people procure to us buying in bulk and helping distribute and/or helping them buy with us. It is something that could take a, a few different avenues. What we're most interested in learning from the council is this an area that you would like us to focus to, to assist business? Support to entrepreneurs and business. This is more aimed at the startup companies, those that are, are particularly effective. They're fragile, just teetering on maybe going forward. This perhaps could be done in conjunction with the accelerator. Another part of this program that we thought about is people that have a specific business model that might want to expand that model. In other words, go and, and have an online presence in addition to their brick and mortar so that they can expand and get back to business more quickly. This may help them with that conversion. The restaurant relief, Al Fresco Glendale, we stole that, that term, Al Fresco. San Jose has adopted this. There are several, Tampa, Florida has something in place. Many cities are looking at it and just now rolling it out. The idea is that you allow spaces outside of the restaurant to be used for dining. This could be sidewalk, but even extend into the parking spaces that are right in front and adjacent to the building. With social distancing going to be required inside the restaurant, you maybe can only fit twenty-five percent of what you did before, simply because of spacing. This would allow restaurateurs to go outside and, and add more tables and serve more people. Certainly, the, there would be an impact if we did go back to charging for parking. There may be an impact in the revenue. And first and foremost, though, would be how do we ensure safety of diners? Whether that's K-Rail or, or something else, but people that might be out of the right of way. But this would be a program designed, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars may be to acquire those safety, safety apparatus. It could be for buying tables and chairs and umbrellas for people to use outside. We do know that the DTA is interested in assisting with this and, and helping organize where those spaces might be in, in working with their membership. And then finally, to take the Al Fresco concept even further, this may be an opportunity for us to other businesses, gyms, when they're able to reopen, to have some of their equipment outside in parking areas or on sidewalks that people may be able to utilize. Probably not on Brand Boulevard, but maybe in some of the smaller business districts. Support the art, I was going, oh, one last thing on restaurant relief. The state agency, alcoholic beverage control, has just determined that they will relax their, their regulations to allow for this concept to take place. They will have certain guidelines for business. They, they need to do some simple application for it. But in general, alcoholic beverage control will allow something like this if the local entity is agreeable.
Any questions, please, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor member Devine.
So the, the restaurants will, are included in the small business recovery assistance program?
Yes, they are.
Okay, all right. And this is just an additional possibility? Okay, thank you.
To allow them to expand their capacity.
Right, okay, thank you. Right, okay, thank you.
I make a comment on that?
Mr. Brothman.
Yeah, I think this Alfresco Glendale is a very exciting opportunity that I'd like us to work on as quickly as we can. I know Pasadena, just yesterday, their ed tech committee of their council discussed this, and they want to try to move this along. And I know South Pasadena, a couple other, I forget what other city, another city nearby. Anyway, everybody's basically looking at doing this. And we know that, you know, the business restaurant model doesn't work if you're taking away half the tables and you're inside, so we're going to have to help them by providing public space to spread out. And I think customers will also be a lot more comfortable eating outside because, and doing other shopping outside, because we know that, you know, it's not risk-free, but the risk of infection outdoors is a lot lower than indoors. There was one thing, and I sent staff something on this, Riverside is doing something interesting, they call it the COVID-compliant Business Partnership Program, where they're working with small businesses, restaurants, but others, providing, you know, PPE, helping, you know, train on what are the best practices for, you know, preventing infections. And then if the businesses go through this program, they get a sign, which is like, I'm COVID compliant, right? It's like that A, B, C, D that you get, you know, I'm COVID compliant. And I think that would go a long way to getting people comfortable with, you know, hey, I can eat there, I can go shop there, because these guys have gone through this and they know what they're doing. So I would, I would love for us to move quickly, you know, and I know you smile when I say that, you know, I'm very impatient. But anyway, move quickly and just try to get some life going on the streets. And I did have a correspondence, very, very brief, with Rick Lemo, and I know he's really excited about doing something like this. And I've also talked to Andre Ordebegian in Montrose, and that would be a perfect place, I think, to do something like this. Maybe you close off the street, you make, you make the whole public space an open space for people to eat and enjoy.
Ms. Yasmimber, you want to ask?
No, sir.
Okay, let's continue.
Support the arts, this is, one of the, one of the areas that have been hit the hardest are artists and arts organizations. This would not be something that we're directing specifically at the Alex Theater, but rather arts organizations, Antaeus, Mark Music, and artists themselves who have been, who can no longer generate income because of the shutdown orders. So a portion of funding would be set aside for that group of people. Childcare support, we believe that--
Well, just as an aside, in terms of the supporting of the arts, does that mean that we would just provide them with the assistance of funds for them to utilize for whatever they need? Or would we be, would it be possible to also acquire some of the programming that they have that we can pass along to our residents? Performance, musical performance, theatrical performance that we could possibly stream on our GTV6 for our residents who are homebound? If not, we have a discussion with them about that.
You mean, in exchange for a grant, they would be, they would do some kind of performance in extending culture, arts and culture into the community, is that the idea? We hadn't thought of that, simply because the other programs, we weren't, but it's a great idea. And if there is a demographic that would probably agree to that, I imagine it's those that are in the arts. So we could, if the council wants to pursue this, we could add that component.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that I would be very much in favor of doing something in the arts. And I saw, you probably all saw too, there was an article from a couple days ago in the LA Times about the LA City Council taking some of the money from its art impact fees. I'm not saying that that would be the way we do it, but they're, they're doing this kind of thing, especially with performance venues like the Antaeus and these organizations, and individual artists, that we certainly want to keep them alive and healthy because they're so important to Glendale. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of putting some money behind that.
With respect to childcare, we know that it is a very important component of getting back to business. I think Mr. Kasakian was talking about it earlier today. Parents, they, it is an important, it is the critical feature for parents to be able to go back once we start opening up. So this may be a program that somebody that wasn't anticipating needing childcare, but now they're going back to work, it could be a voucher. It could be an amount of money to an organization that will help with that and do a program. We certainly would work in concert with community services and parks, that is looking at camps right now, as schools haven't quite made the decision of when they're going to open. So this could be an important component. And then enhancing access to emergency recovery resources, this would be groups like, the one that comes to mind is the Montrose Verdugo Chamber of Commerce. They are an organization that can help, that would help, that does do things in the economy. But for the most part, as I understand, they are not eligible for the federal programs. And so they have not received any of that programming. We would look to put some small amount of money, there's not a lot of them, to help them, perhaps five, $10,000 grants, again, if that's something the council is interested in. If you look at all of these programs, $4.65 million is what we looked at. Again, the staff could implement all of them, but it would just take us more time. So if there's two or three that the council is really interested in, we will do that, and then we can come back with the others if the need is still there. Okay, this, this slide really just goes back over those residential programs that were applicable to COVID recovery. We just put them again here in that part of the discussion, but we've already talked of these. Michelle, can I have the next one? And that ends the housing and business recovery portion.
Mr. Mayor, if it works with you, we're going to move to community services and parks, and Mr. Bolanikian will provide you with information on the year-round aquatics program.
Thank you.
Before we let, before we let Mr. Lanzafin go, I want to say thank you for this presentation, and thank you for all the research and thought that you've put into it. I know it hasn't been easy to try and decide where to potentially allocate resources, and the programs that you've put forward definitely show the amount of care that you and your staff have for the welfare of this community. I did want to say that in terms of Alfresco dining option or the idea, I know other cities have done it. I thought that Riverside suggestion that Councilmember Brothman brought up is a good idea. But however, and I want to stress this, and I can't stress enough, and I know you will, but it bears repeating, to talk to both the restaurants and the businesses in the areas that will be impacted. All of these decisions, especially drastic changes, we know that it's intended to keep our businesses afloat, but if we don't get the buy-in, and if we can't explain the reasoning behind wanting to do certain things to the businesses and understand from them what exactly they need, then it's all for naught. We have to make sure that the restaurants in the areas where these will be implemented, whether it's in the downtown, whether it's in the Montrose area, they're all on board, as well as the adjoining businesses, which will be undoubtedly impacted by whether it's removal of parking spaces or whatever it may be.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please. Councilmember Devine.
I, yes, I totally agree with Councilmember Kasakian. We have to, if we try to do anything like this restaurant relief, these projects, we have to have outreach, and we have to have toll agreement from those that will be impacted. I think, again, to make decisions without talking to those businesses involved, those associations involved, is a huge mistake. And so I totally concur with Mr. Kasakian. And hopefully, if we decide, if council decides to go along with this restaurant relief package, that staff, staff never does anything, I know, without consulting, or hardly ever does anything without consulting all of the partners, all of the collaborators that are involved. And so I would just encourage that that happens with this restaurant relief idea. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Broth--
Just, yeah, so I totally agree, and that's why I informally reached out to the Greater Downtown Glendale Association and to the Montrose Shopping Park Association to get their temperature on it. And I think they're excited, so, but absolutely, we would, those organizations and others would be the ones we want to, we want to work through and let them, let them drive, you know, the locations and things like that. We can be supportive.
Right, well, I, if I may--
Yes, please.
I think talking to one person that's involved in these organizations is not exactly enough. I think we have to talk to everybody that's involved and do it, do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's continue, please.
Thank you, Mayor Agajanian, members of the council, good morning, or good afternoon. Real quick, I have a few slides on our aquatics program. The City of Glendale aquatics program started in 2000. We used Pacific Park Swimming Pool, the old pool that was there, and a couple of the Glendale GUSD pools. In conclusion of the 2000 summer season, Pacific Park Pool was demolished to make way for the Pacific Park Edison Project, but staff continued to use GUSD swimming pools through 2011. And summer of 2011, once when Pacific Park Pool opened up, we reduced the budget for the pools at GUSD, transferred those, the funding over to Pacific Park, and started the summer program at Pacific. The summer program at Pacific starts Memorial Weekend and ends, end of September, between September 1 to, end of September, we're only, we're only open on weekends. And thanks to the funding through Measure S, we operated our first year-round aquatics program. And of course, due to COVID-19, the aquatics operation stopped on March 15 of this year. The year-round op--
Excuse me?
Yes?
Do you have any news or information that the pools, when you can open up the pools?
We're working with LA County on a opening plan. Actually, all the cities are working with LA County, but there's a meeting, actually, there was a meeting this morning. There's an aquatics opening committee that staff is on, and we're basically working with them on maintenance protocols, opening protocols, and seeing what other cities are doing. Currently, all the cities, or most of the cities, are following City of LA aquatics. Currently, City of LA, they're looking at canceling recreation swimming and only open the pool for swimming lessons and lap swim. But we'll come to council within the next couple weeks with all of our opening guidelines. The LA County is basically working on a packet for recreation programming, sports programming, field programming, and aquatics programming, and they're submit their findings to LA County Public Health by June 1st.
Thank you.
So the year-on-aquatics program, we had a number of programs and activities, swimming lessons that took place after school and weekends. We had a lap swim, our lap swim program started 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., five days a week, Monday through Friday, and Saturdays and Sundays, we also had lap swim. We had a number of private groups that used our facility for master swimming, party rentals, birthday parties, classes. We had a number of dive-in movies. Instead of a drive-in movie, we had dive-in movies where kids basically floated in an inner tube and watched the movies while swimming. And we also had special events, one being the Thanks Swimming, Thanks Swimming Event that occurred in November of last year. Between September 1 through March 14, we had a total of 15,691 visits. This include swim lessons, rentals, lap swim, classes, aquasize, and special events. And our proposed budget for this coming year, or next year, is $582,000, which includes staffing, programming, supplies, and utilities. Any questions on aquatics?
I have a question.
One second, Mr. Najari.
I think this was a very good use of the funds last year. This is a pool that we invested in in 2010, and it is situated in one of the most park-poor areas of our city. In fact, not only park-poor, but pool-poor. This is different than the single-family neighborhoods where maybe every other home has a swimming pool where the kids can go and swim. It teaches good athleticism, good physical activity, reducing some of the childhood diabetes issues that we have in some of the underserved areas. It promotes learning how to swim, which is a life-saving skill. It's used, in normal times, the masters team gets in at 5:00 a.m.
6:00 a.m.
6:00 a.m., and it goes well into the evening. And I just, I would support continuing the pool program. And there will be light at the end of the tunnel, certain cities, Mission Viejo has already adopted their protocols. It's mainly for lap swimming, things like, you know, you have to come to the pool with your bathing suit, you can't go into the locker room and change and fool around, you know how kids do, is spray water and snap towels and all that, everything would be outside. No congregating at one end of the pool, one entrance and one exit, so people aren't passing back and forth. So I do support the pool program, and I think it was a success last year.
Thank you. Councilmember Devine?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bolanikian, you know, I have all the respect for community services and parks, you do a great program all over the city, but you don't have a wish list here. There is nothing here that you are wishing for out of this Measure S funding. And I'm thinking, I wonder if anyone would be interested in maybe putting, earmarking some of this Measure S funding for another park in South Glendale, if we could purchase a property or a dog park or a trail. I know there was talk once about a trail up in Adams Hill. If we could do some, some research on a possibility of a project like that out of the Measure S funding? You know, we used $500,000 last year for different programs, and then we did all of your swimming programs and camp programs. Why don't we designate some of this funding for a park, a dog park, a people's park, a passive park? Do any of my colleagues--
I'd be open to that. I'd second that, depending on Councilmember Devine and Mayor, how much it is that we're talking about. But I think even if we put down a small chip on the table to say, this is what our intention is, and it may grow in the coming years, depending on what the finances look like, it shows a positive intention for the residents of the geographically southern portion of our city.
Yeah, and I know we're always looking for property, and that's the problem, it's always so expensive, but maybe we could do more, more research and possibly come up with a, some sort of great idea or great space. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Next.
Any other colleagues want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I mean, if I could, just to say, I also support that, I think it's a great idea to, you know, earmark some money, perhaps, and then be strategic and be on the lookout for opportunities, especially if we get into a difficult economic time, there may be, there may be opportunities that didn't-- There may be, there may be opportunities that didn't exist in the past. So I'm, I'm in favor.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I can add just a couple of things. It will be important to just set aside and earmark that, just because if in the future, and I know Community Services and Parks has been very, very good at finding grants and finding extra money programs available, we can say, look, this is one of the things that we are hoping to actualize and make into a reality, so we can use that grant money for that. We're not saying to use entirely our funds, I don't think. At this time, I think council, or Divine agrees that we have more pressing needs, but I think it's a very, very good idea to at least make that gesture. In addition, I just want to say that for the aquatics programs, I couldn't agree more about the importance of this, especially when we talk about some of the more densely populated portions of our city, when we talk about stay-at-home orders, when we talk about our young children. As a parent, I know how frustrating it is for our younger residents, our non-voting younger residents, to endure what we're all enduring, sometimes without the understanding that we as adults have. And I think to be able to have some programs which, both as Councilmember Najarian stated, provide those important life skills in terms of swimming and water safety, but this is also going to provide a relief during some of our hottest months. So I do want to encourage the continued operation of this, especially, and I wouldn't say this unless the CDC, the Center for Disease Control reaffirmed that the spread of COVID-19 has not been linked to aquatic uses, especially when there is measures in place and social distancing is maintained. So given those, I would like to, although I don't know if we're going to be able to do the same amount as before because of the, just physical capacity of the pool, but in terms of whatever we can do, if that means more reservations or allowing only a certain number of people in the pool at a time, I think it is an important resource that our public should benefit from during these coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're going to move on to the infrastructure piece, which we will go through rather quickly. Most of this you have already seen before, so it's, it's more of a refresher and asking for funding on a couple of items that we discussed previously. And Mr. Emrani will take you through that process.
Thank you very much, Mayor Agajanian and members of city council. The first project that, want to give you a quick update about, is the seismic upgrades for our fire stations. If you can go to the, oh, I have it. Seismic upgrades for our fire stations. We have, we had developed the RFP for this project and identified qualified vendors. We sent out the RFP and brought a firm onboard who's currently started work on this project, and we expect their report by the end of July. Once we have their report, we can move forward with the next phase of the identified improvements or retrofits for our fire stations. As far as the new infrastructure projects, we have the citywide traffic study, Verdugo-Wash Greenway feasibility study, CCTV of the sewer system, South Central Avenue Rehab Project, and the equipment replacement at City Hall. I'll start with the citywide traffic study. This is basically, will involve looking at the citywide traffic circulation, inventory of the traffic data, developing a computer model and a database for monitoring and evaluating of the traffic flow, analysis of near and future traffic flow patterns within the city, and developing, I know we're under COVID-19, we don't have the traffic congestion issues, but down the line, once things return back to normal, would be looking at traffic congestion countermeasures and providing recommendation to mitigate these traffic growth issues that we would have. And additionally, some of the objectives will be intersection traffic operation analysis, street segment, traffic flow analysis, traffic signal synchronization, which would be the result of the computer model, and emergency vehicle traffic flow analysis. The requested budget for this, that we're respectfully asking for, is $500,000.
A Wash Greenway.
Let me just ask a question then of Mr.-
Mr. Russ. Najarian.
Is any of this duplicative of the BRT studies that will be done on the routing? I know the area is restricted. It's, you know, from the Eagle Rock side to the Burbank side, but is there any way that we can dovetail with that to make the, the use of the dollars more efficient? Maybe use the same, I don't even know if they've picked a contractor or consultant for that, but, because they do sort of, you know, they do sort of interreact. If you're doing the traffic study now, and then later we, we overlay a BRT that may have some restricted lanes and, you know, et cetera, we don't want to invalidate our traffic study findings with the new BRT issues.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Councilmember Najarian, we can absolutely work with Metro on that. There are, the areas of the BRT would be areas that we would look at, especially the intersections, in terms of the, any traffic impacts, and obviously looking at the parking. They're looking at other elements such as the, the impact on parking spaces, for example, in that area. So we could definitely work with them and realize some savings in that, in that area.
So I do need, thank you. I do need to recuse myself, and I just want to be clear that even if there's no possibility of right-of-way acquisition, the mere distance is the disqualifying-
Right. Under the FPPC guidelines, there's a presumption of a conflict within 500 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, Councilmember Najarian, before you go, because I wanted to make another comment on the, on the traffic study, so. So, you know, I, I support this, I talked about it during the campaign, I think everybody did, and it's important that we understand the traffic patterns, absolutely. But I want to make sure when we look at mitigation, we're really focusing on the new ways that people, that transportation planners are looking at mitigation, which is vehicle miles traveled, not level of service, and that we therefore, you know, make sure we're integrating it with our thoughts around transit, you know, ride-sharing, active transportation, and how do we also integrate that with, you know, make, slowing traffic and making, making it safer, you know, for our pedestrians and our, and our bicyclists? So that's, that's, I just want to make sure that that's, you know, understood, as my, my position would be, yes, do the traffic study, make sure on the mitigation side, we're not kind of looking at it in the traditional way, because, you know, everybody's moving away from level of service as a, as a, kind of a, I guess, a guidepost for mitigation, so just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
The next one is Verdugo-Wash, which I believe Phil Landsafame will speak to.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, this is a project that you've seen, you've given us some direction on, that you would like to move forward. It is here to ask for funding through, if you want to fund through Measure S. Again, high level, it's a feasibility study for a bike path that would go from just around Oakmont down to the LA River. You had indicated that you wanted us to look at the opportunity for green, greening some of the path and not just a bike path, incorporate into natural habitat and perhaps other parks that are along the way. The feasibility study will look at strengths and weaknesses, alternative designs, property that we may need to acquire, how much right-of-way, or how much of the course could go on existing right-of-way and things of that nature. We will engage the public to get their feedback on it, as well as look at some funding opportunities to actually construct. This estimated is $200,000 to $250,000. Probably 16 to 90 days to put together an RFP for a design consultant, and then maybe 12 to 18 months to do the study itself.
Mr. Mayor and council and Director Landsafame, yeah, far be it from me to tell the citizens and experts on how to do their job, but one of the things that I would like to see, since we are talking about this now, is for there to be some study or feedback to the council about also, not just doing the, this project within the Wash, but to see what is the feasibility or the utility of capping some parts of the Wash in addition to this, only because I think that there is some, it bears for us to at least look into, to see areas where we can create a cap, put a green space on top. This is, I think, more feasible than capping the 134 freeway, and it's something that I would actually like to see studied as part of it.
Thank you.
And if I could just add-
Please.
Just, just to add on to that, I think we should think of this, you know, more, not, and, and talk about it, not as a bike path, because it's really not. It's a linear park, right? Think about it as, as much, as much as possible, conceive of this as a park. That could have different activities, including biking, but also pedestrian use and, and other things. So, so I, you know, I agree. I mean, if we can do, if we can cap it in some places, that makes that even, you know, more possible.
Thank you. Next.
So the next one is closed-circuit TV of the sanitary sewer collection system. This is something that we've done periodically for parts of the system. However, this would be a holistic approach as part of the regulatory requirements that we would have to, we would have to do, and to identify the location where we're, we may have defects within the system. And the requested budget for this is $2.5 million. The next project is the South Central Avenue Rehab Project. This is a project that we're estimating at $5 million. It involves pavement rehabilitation, reconstruction of curbs, gutters, and the sidewalks along the way to, to come to ADA compliance, and some traffic signal upgrades. And the project extent is South Central between East Colorado and San Fernando Road. We're requesting $2.5 million to, from Measure S. The remaining would be funded by gas tax. And then the last two projects are maintenance projects, air handler system at the City Hall East, which controls the air handler system, controls the air conditioning and the, the heating system. The system is over 50 years old. Parts are really hard to find, and basically this would be to prevent a shutdown of the system for City Hall East. We are requesting $250,000 for that. And the last item is the main electrical switchgear at City Hall, which is, again, is over 50 years old, and a potential failure of it would basically leave City Hall without any power. So to prevent that, we would like to this, to do this repair, and the requested cost is $250,000. And that's-
Thank you.
I believe concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
But this point, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what we would ask is for Mari to unfortunately take RM's seat, and for us to go through a process by which council gives us direction in terms of what your interests are for the possibility of setting aside funds within Measure S for programming in this coming fiscal year. And I would take you forward to slide 40 so that we can get to that point, and Michelle can, can help drive this as you provide us with, with information. So Michelle, if you can go over this piece of it, that would be really helpful.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as Ms. Spears indicated, we will, we'd like to get from you the direction for Measure S funding for this next year, so we can build it into the budget. We have about $20.5 million. You'll see that at the end of slide 39, the final balance there. And that is assuming the carryover projects that are currently in progress, which is the remaining money in the affordable housing development, the remainder of the monthly housing subsidy, rental subsidy program, and the fire station seismic upgrades. So we have not put in yet the first-time homebuyer program. However, if council chooses, we can definitely put that in there. That would bring our balance down to just under 20 million. It'd be about 19.8 million. We haven't, also, looking at slide 40, the two programs that are currently funded for this year, we would request funding for, for next year to continue those, which would be the rental rights program, as well as the year-round aquatics program. So those we can move over into the far-right column for, for 20, fiscal year 2020, 21, if council still chooses, and, as well as the rest of the programs that are listed on that slide. We'll try and make this a working document as we go, so we can keep track, so if you could-
And the only other item that we need to bring up first off, as Mr. Garcia gave me a heads-up on, so that we can make a determination on the Verdugo-Wash, as well as-
The Attorney Financial Assistance Program, that was part of Mr. Landsafame's discussion on the affordable housing programs, so.
Those two items, if council can give us direction on those two items, and then Councilmember Najarian can step back in and, and be a part of the remainder of the discussion.
I'm sorry, which items again?
The Verdugo-Wash.
Uh huh.
Which is-
$250,000?
$250,000.
Uh huh.
So if we can get feedback on that piece from the city council, since Mr. Najarian cannot participate, and we can figure out how this budget works. And the second piece of that was the Attorney Assistance Program, in terms of what Mr. Landsafame was discussing earlier. If there's any interest in that, that's the area that we would ask for as well.
Attorney issue is not reflected on this page?
On slide 22.
Mr. Mayor, that falls under the affordable housing component, even though it says development.
Page 39? Which page?
On, on slide 40, it would be under, it's one of the programs under affordable housing.
And if you want to refer back to slide 22, all of those items in terms of dollars are listed on slide 22.
Slide 22.
Yes, sir.
So-
Yeah. Okay. Okay, on item Verdugo-Wash. So do we have to have a motion?
A motion, but just the direction that-
Direction.
Council wants to include that within the budget.
Yes, everybody-
Well, I'm a supporter, I'm a supporter of that.
So there is a support apparently.
Okay.
So Verdugo-Wash is supported.
And then the other item would be the Attorney Financial Assistance Program. It's A5 on slide 22, whether the council wants to include any funding.
Which, how much was the cost?
That varies between $50,000 and $500,000, with the possibility of assisting up to 100 individuals. And Phil, you can chime in to clarify.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll weigh in. I don't know, are you, what, are you asking us for both or just for one of the items?
We're asking for direction on both, since Councilmember Najarian can't participate on that item, on those items.
Okay. So on the, on the Verdugo-Wash, if I may, I'm in support of that. And of the Attorney Assistance, I am not in support of that, because Neighborhood Legal Services is available. We have attorneys available at the city for question-answer, and of course, they're already doing mediation, so I'm opposed to that one, and suggest that we put that money in another, another pot.
I, I concur with Councilmember Divine.
Okay, that's, I think it's out, out of, already we have two.
I mean, I would, I would say, we have a lot of tenants that are taken advantage of and look for legal support and don't find it in the normal places, and I, I think it would be wise for us to provide some form of low-cost or no-cost legal assistance- legal assistance, be above and beyond what we do provide today.
About Neighborhood Services.
And I don't think it's happening. I mean, I just don't think the support is there. So, um, I really think we, we should be looking at, um, um, in my opinion, putting somebody on retainer or, um, somehow, somehow increasing the funding. What's that?
Councilmember Brotman, um, I, I'm not disagreeing with the need that exists or that may exist, or may arise, rather. Um, I just feel that we have at least a couple of nonprofit legal agencies. I think Councilmember Devine would kept saying Neighborhood Legal Services, which is, um, a longstanding, um, nonprofit that has been in the community, um, as well as there's a few others that, um, I think are out there that specifically deal with these issues. Um, I think that this was, from what I understood, uh, a program that the city would work with a specific law firm, um, that would be on some sort of retainer to be able to help, um, residents, and I, I just think that this could be fraught with issues. I would rather just see the nonprofits continue to provide the assistance, and if later on down the line they require, um, if they apply for some sort of funding from the city, they can come and have that conversation with us. But I'm not interested in having the city run a program. I would much rather see that money put into direct assistance, uh, for our, our renters and, uh, homeowners and businesses.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kasachian and Paula Devine. I guess this is not going, is not passing, so let's go, move to the next item. Do we have any other issue to discuss before Mr. Najarian to come in?
No, sir. These were the only two items.
Okay. So let's ask, uh, Councilmember Najarian to come back. Okay. Now, what's next?
Uh, for the, Michelle, do you want to, go ahead?
Um, so we can start with the affordable housing, um, portions, and those are all the programs that Mr. Landis-Fame went through, um, ways to assist renters as well as landlords. And if council wanted to take each one of those or decide.
Okay, I just want to make a statement. I'm very disappointed, actually. I listened to all this, uh, presentation. All of a sudden, this Measure S became the main provider of all those expenses. This Measure S was when it was discussed, and I personally was involved with this measure through TV stations and programs, that this was presented as something to do with the housing, the difficulty with having affordable housing. Now, uh, main electric switch, AC equipment replacement, South Central Rehabilitation, Verdugo Wash, okay, I agreed with that. All right. Traffic study and other stuff. I mean, seismic upgrade. I mean, this is too much. Let's have this, we had, uh, we offered 65 units, 6,875 people, families. They came forward. So we deduct that, so there are 6,810 people still waiting. And if that, that's the trend, it will be over 100 years. Those who have been on the list, who did not get the unit, they have to wait another 100 years to get some sort of help. This is, I mean, we have to come up with at least every year 500 units. And this is what I'm talking about. Let's assume nobody will be added to that list. I mean, every year there are more people, more people who are in need, they're elderly, become older, and how long they have to wait? I mean, since 1976, I said, I studied, and there was 1,245 affordable housing which we provided. Mr. Landis-Fame came and said, that's not 1,245, it's 1,875. Let's assume it's over 2,000 we have provided during 43 years. It means average of 45 units per year. They say they provided 45 units, affordable housing for their, uh, residents. I mean, how long these people, they have to wait and wait and wait? We came up with Measure S. The only reason I agreed to it, that I was told, that if we don't add some other, uh, request, like whatever has been mentioned here, then we have to have, uh, not only 50-plus-one vote, if we put that issue for the vote of the public, we have to have two, two-thirds of the, those who will vote on it, we have to have like 66.7% in agreement to pass this measure. And now I, if we don't write, uh, other, like Verdugo, I mean, other, uh, help that we can provide to the general public, like traffic study or police and fire and other stuff, we, we don't add to Measure S, if it's only based on affordable housing, it's not going to pass with 50-plus-one vote. Okay, I agree. Now, day by day, we are adding to it. Let's, uh, make this list, the 6,800, or the last time we offered 31 units of affordable housing, over 10,000 people came forward for that 31 units, over 10,000. So we can see that the need for affordable housing. So let's do something. I mean, we allocated 20-some million dollars. We bought two properties. I mean, belonged to AT&T and, uh, the other one on Broadway. So that's not enough. We just say, okay, we'll be more, more than 400 units on that prop, on these two properties. So still going to be 6,800, that's this, they're going to still, they're going to be on the waiting list, or they're going to hope that they, one day, they will get an affordable housing. So I just don't want to spend every dollar of Measure S on 10 items which has been provided here. How are we going to answer these people, how long they have to wait? I remember I met a, uh, woman who was telling me we were on the list of, uh, what's the other one? Which we have 2,200 on.
Section 8.
Section 8. And she was telling me that my husband passed away. He didn't get the chance to get the Section 8, uh, housing or help, and I'm still waiting. And she was only 89 years old. So still she is waiting. We have 2,200, over 2,200 on the list. I mean, I don't know, how we can go and sleep? When we see our people, those who are, I'm talking about Glendale. I've been elected for City of Glendale. I'm just talking about Glendaleans. I'm, I know the need is everywhere, every other city, but, uh, I can't do anything. But I can't sit back and look and say, okay, it doesn't matter, let them handle their own problems. And please, let's allocate more money for affordable housing and stop this pain and suffering, at least for few, very few group of people. That's my two cents. Thank you.
I may. Mayor Oreganyan, members of the City Council, um, I know, and I think we all know how near and dear this is to your heart in terms of, um, your policy direction, um, from, from the time you campaigned, uh, to the time that you became a, a council member. And in no way, the menu of options, um, is in conflict, uh, with, uh, your vision and hopefully the, the council as, as a whole ultimately. And as we went through this process initially last year, uh, to provide some, um, allowance for us to have a conversation regarding Measure S and, and council's direction, uh, in terms of appropriating, uh, into different pockets, uh, for us to be able to, um, ultimately bring back programming that, uh, was very specific, uh, within the housing and affordable housing, uh, piece of, of the policy direction, as well as some other, uh, recreational types of things that council approved, as well as infrastructure needs, as you stated, in terms of the seismic upgrade, uh, conversation regarding the, the Fire Department, um, and, and its facilities. And this year, we tried in, in the same, uh, vein to bring forward information and a menu of options for council to consider, uh, of which many of them are within the economic recovery piece of it, of which many of them, uh, are within, uh, the residential, uh, component for affordability and to help, uh, the community that is in need. Uh, in terms of affordable housing and acquisition, you still have $7.9 million that you didn't expend last year. That's part of the budget moving forward. It's carried over. And you have $11 million within other affordable housing funds for development. So you do have a total of $19 million that's still set aside for the possibility of any sort of acquisition that may come forward, or any, uh, help that we need to provide for tax credits for the two, um, pieces of part, uh, land that you have purchased, acquired, uh, this past year. And so contextually, I just want to remind the council that you do have those funds already set aside. So you're looking at 7.9 for Measure S and 11 million, uh, from the other housing funds, uh, and this is for develop, affordable, uh, development of housing. And again, we will take whatever feedback the council has, uh, in terms of what your thoughts are, uh, moving forward.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
I, I do agree with some of the, uh, the comments that you make.
Thank you.
Mayor. Some of them I have a little bit of a different, uh, perspective, but I, I do agree that there's some items here which I understand really are needed, uh, such as the, uh, the sewer collection system analysis, um, the air replacement handler at City Hall, the electrical switch. You know, these are, I'm sure they're, they're needed if our head of, uh, Public Works is telling us they're needed. I, they don't feel to me like they fit into what was sold to the public when, um, when they were considering Measure S. And I was not on council, but I was a, a member of the public, and it wasn't only about housing, it was quality of life. So parks, I think, clearly fit into that. Road repair, I think fits into that. So I think the, the South Central Rehabilitation Project does make sense. Sustainability was in there, uh, pedestrian safety, streets and sidewalks. There were, you know, a number of things, um, including fighter and paramedic staffing levels, police officer levels. There were a lot of things, you know, and, and I think that's what the public heard. They heard that this is not just going to be used for one thing. As much as I agree with you totally that we have a crisis in affordable housing, we need to address it, but we also have a lot of other issues like sustainability, which I'm very passionate about, and, and, um, and park space, especially in South Glendale. So I think we need to be a little bit balanced, and we, and it seems we are putting a lot of resources, as the city manager just, just mentioned, into housing. So I don't think this is a, you know, I think we, we need to do a little bit of, of a number of things, but I have to say, I, I agree that some of these items, to me, don't feel like they fit into the spirit of what Measure S was presented as being for, so.
I'm sorry, now, I didn't want to discuss this further, but we do not have just Measure S. The way it's presented here as Measure S is our budget. This isn't the true. We have general budget of 240 million dollars. So some of those can be provided in general budget. It shouldn't come to Measure S. Measure S is people, they are paying more money, more taxes, and at that time, we were pushing more to convince. After all the effort I put in, we had 52% success, only 52% voted for this Measure S. And now, as if we are talking, there is no general fund budget, this is the only game in town, so we have to add everything to Measure S. That's what, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. So let me just, just clear it up. Here's the actual ballot language. It says, and it was put as a question, "Shall the measure to expand funding to protect essential services such as fire, paramedics, police, parks, recreation, senior, library, arts and culture, and affordable housing programs and services, and to improve streets and sidewalks by enacting a 3/4% transaction and use tax, uh, be adopted?" So, everything that we're talking about is, is within that measure. So we can't say, well, you know, the roadways are not by definition permitted. Let me, let me move this forward. I, I agree with you that we should put some of this money, so we're at the, we're at this third line there, affordable housing development. I agree that we should put, uh, several million dollars in there. Phil, Landis-Fame told us that it could be up to, he said, 8 to 12 million for the land and another 4 million to sweeten it for the tax credits. So that's 14, 15, 16 million dollars. I'm not saying we should put all that in, because we've got some leftover we haven't spent yet in the previous year. If you want to propose putting 5, 6 million into our development fund for affordable housing, I would support that. And then, and then, as a placeholder, and then go down this list, and we have to plug in numbers, and, you know, we're going to have to do some accounting and addition and subtraction, but for now, to get this discussion moving forward, I would not be opposed putting, um, single-digit millions into the affordable housing. And single-digit, in my mind, I'm thinking between four and seven.
That's, is that enough?
No, no amount of money is enough. We could put all of this in. There's two problems. One is, it wouldn't solve our problem. The second is, we couldn't build it fast enough. We'd be looking at years and years in the future. I think we're working as quick as we can on the two that we've bought, as you mentioned, the, um, the Pacific site and the Broadway site. We're maybe a year, two years away from, from that being a reality. So I don't want to overload it too much now and have that money sitting there. I think if we maintain a certain, um, discipline every year, put in a certain amount into this affordable housing fund, we'll have enough to build with, no matter how fast we work to buy and to, to construct and to entitle them for the, the tax credit.
In my opinion, pretty soon, there will be properties available, which we never will get it in a ordinary, normal time.
So what Phil, I agree with you. So what Phil said is that we can use general fund money and then backfill the following year with Measure S money if there's an exceptional, exceptionally great purchase out there. And that goes not only for affordable housing, but for the whole park discussion that we were having. If there's a great piece of land that's perfect for a park, but we didn't allocate it this year, we can take from general fund and backfill with Measure S. Am I correct in that?
You're correct. And, and we also have $19 million set aside currently for acquisition.
So let's plug a number in there that, that we can all be. 10 might be a little rich, but, okay, the proposal is 10. You know, let's hear from the other councilmen and members.
Councilmember Devine, would like Councilmember Devine?
Yes, please. Councilmember Devine.
Uh, well, I, I would recommend 6 million, and that would bring our, um, uh, pre-designated amount to $25 million.
I can live with 6.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I'm okay with that, too. I mean, this is not the final word. We're going to plug it in, and then we're going to see where we end up, right? But as a starting point, I think that, that's, I'm happy with that.
Councilmember Kasachian.
Uh, let's start with that and see where the rest of the discussion goes. I have some thoughts on where my, I would like to see, um, which programs, but I'll, I'll, I'll wait for other council members to comment.
Mr. Mayor, I, I can start this if you'd like.
Please, go ahead.
This is Devine?
Councilmember Devine.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. So, um, I'll just go through. So I'll just go through the list of the programs, the allotments that I personally feel are necessary, especially because of the COVID-19 crisis. First of all, the 6 million, and to pre-designate those funds, not to hold in reserve, but to pre-designate the funds for affordable housing. Now, there are other choices for housing, let's see, how is it put? My favorite, I have two favorites, the Life Wrap. That's the assistance, assistance rent and training program. Let me see where that is. I like that program. That gives, it's 1.2 million. It gives those low-income residents an opportunity to learn and to be trained for other jobs in case their job is not available, and coordinates with our Verdugo Job Center. And I think that sounds like a really good program. The other one I'm really in favor of is the student assistance. You know, I think, I've often said that some of our affordable housing should go to our college students. So I like that program, just to give the kids some assistance, as Brotman mentioned. You know, some of them are living in their cars and they don't even have food, so I think they're really in need. And my third choice in that particular section was the N-RAP program. That's the, I can't remember which one that is. I'll find it. Anyway, those are the three programs. I'm, the four is that section. I think we should definitely provide low-income housing incentives to our Section 8 landlords. This could incentivize even more to become part of that program, so I'm in favor of that. I'm also in favor of the single-family mortgage. If there are people, residents out there that are, you know, on the verge of losing their homes, let's try to give them some help in this crisis situation. I also, then, getting into the economic recovery, definitely the Small Business Recovery Assistance Program, and I would suggest that we move that Restaurant Relief 750 into that category. You know, I'm, you know, we could try the Restaurant Relief, but I'm more, I think it's more important to give these restaurant owners, small businesses, more assistance. I'm for the equipment. Definitely, I'm for the arts assistance, and also for the, what is it, the enhancing the accessibility, donating, and it's a small amount, 150 to the Chamber, Montrose for new organizations like that, who are very, very involved in our communities, in the programs that we have, and promoting our businesses. Was there anything else there that I need? That was all I did. And of course, the Verdugo Wash, the traffic study. I'm not so sure, and I guess this question goes to yes. South Central Avenue looks really good to me. I don't understand what we're spending $7 million on. That part of our streets are very, very good, aren't they? Last I drove them, which was quite a while ago, from Colorado to San Fernando.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Divine, that's part of our programming that we've done. South Central Avenue is at a threshold in terms of its pavement condition index that we would need to proactively maintain it. In addition to the paving, there's also the sidewalks, the curb ramps, the curb and gutter issues that we would have to do. That project also includes traffic signal modifications along that corridor. So all in all told, is the reason that we made that as one of our candidates for improvements.
Well, I'd certainly go along with the sewer collection system. I'm not so sure about South Central, and of course, I guess it's okay to replace the air handler in this, no, I don't even think that's important. So those are my suggestions so far. And of course, to allocate for the parks in South Central, maybe two, $3 million, just to put on reserve for acquisition, or, yeah, acquisition for park space in South Central. And those would be my suggestions. Thank you.
How much for?
Can we plug those numbers in, so the next speaker will perhaps know where we are and all that?
We're trying.
All right, how much did I, how much did I?
How much did you spend?
That was a rich shopping spree.
I am a little envious, because I can't go shopping anymore. I'm going to try and go through the list that Ms. Divine just went through and read out the numbers. Ms. Divine, please let me know.
Are you plugging the numbers on this page?
We're going to try. I'm going to recap.
No, I understand which page you are working on. I just want to know that we do the same thing, so.
Slide 40. For the...
No, I know it's slide 40. I want to make sure that that's what we are trying to plug in the numbers.
For the housing assistance programs, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at Slide 22. It's a recap that shows the renter assistance, as well as the landlord homeowner assistance programs. Those are, and then on Slide 29 is the economic recovery, the commercial programs.
I wish you would concentrate everything on one page that we could have seen what we are doing. We can't go back and forth, back and forth. That will be difficult to follow.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor. There was quite the list that we weren't able to put all on one slide.
I understand. Can't you make a new page, or on this page somehow?
We're trying. Mari's working.
There's not enough categories yet on there.
Mari's working on it as we speak, Mr. Mayor, and she's going to try and plug in all of the pieces.
Because otherwise, you have to go back and forth, and then you can't follow.
So I believe that I listed those in the order that we discussed, so if you just start from the first slide and just kind of go on down as you cite the program.
Correct. So I believe...
Oh, she said Life Wrap. You like Life Wrap, right?
Right. On Slide 22, the Life Wrap program.
Is 3 million?
3 million.
Okay. And she liked the LISRA?
The LISRA, which is the student assistance one, is 1.5 million.
She liked the N-RAP, right, Ms. Divine? I'm just, what I recall.
That was kind of my third choice, my third choice, yes.
That was the, I had, was it the LIHIP?
N-RAP. The N-RAP.
The N-RAP. 1.2 million, I think that one was.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I missed that one. Okay, so 3.5 million on that.
Oh, it is? Oh.
That's the top.
Well, there's a range, though, right?
There's a range.
Depending on what the payment is, between 500 a month to 3,500 a month.
Yeah, no, okay, keep it at the low range, I think.
A thousand, that'll get you close to your budget of 1.2 that you mentioned?
Yes, that's fine, yeah.
So the N-RAP at 1 million, which is a $1,000 assistance.
Yeah, yeah, try to be conservative here.
Yeah, we're just plugging this in for now.
Okay, right.
Okay, so we have N-RAP at 1 million. Was it the LIHIP? I'm not sure if I got that one correctly. On the landlord homeowner one?
No, no.
It was the single-family?
I know it was the single...
Low-income housing, low-income housing incentive.
Yes, LIHIP.
Yes, okay.
And the low end on that is 125, 125,000 to 250,000.
Yeah, so I think on that, when you go to the high end.
So 250, okay. And then the single-family assistance is a range of 200,000 to 500,000.
Yeah, you can go to the high range on that one, just in case. I don't think we'll have many cases, but maybe.
That's 500 SF map.
So that, for those assistance programs, that's 6.25 million. And then the Slide 29 had the small business. Small business recovery assistance was 1 million. I believe you mentioned the equipment, the PPE grant for another million, the arts for 500,000, enhancing access to emergency recovery resources of 150. And I apologize if I missed any of those, any of the others.
That's what I heard myself.
Okay.
And the Restaurant Relief would go into Small Business Recovery.
Okay, so that ends up being 1.75 million? Or is that part of the million dollars, Ms. Divine?
Ms. Divine, you did.
So Paula, did you want to add the Restaurant Relief for 750,000 to the Small Business Recovery for a million, or combine them into 1 million?
Well, that would be up to the rest of council if you want. I just think it would, I'd like to see it go into the Small Business Recovery Assistance Program instead of on its own.
So that, for those economic recovery programs, is 3.4 million, if I did my math correctly.
Okay. And in the dog park, I'd say we make an allotment on that one of maybe 3 million.
That's the fund? That's the park fund?
Park, yes, parks in Central, in South Glendale. And then, of course, the pool, the aquatics program.
So the pool is 582,000, and then 3 million to set aside for a new park.
Okay, what does that, do I have money left over?
And then there's the traffic study, right? You guys voted for the traffic study?
Traffic study, yes.
Traffic study has not been voted on yet.
Oh, but I think you had agreed to do that.
And that's where I lost you. So, yes, for the traffic study. That was 500,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Verdugo Wash was 250, where we did have...
So 500 and 250 for Verdugo Wash.
Right. And the aquatics program, I think you already have that in?
Aquatics at 582.
And you got the arts?
Arts were...
That was under the...
Five hundred, 500.
That was under Small Business Recovery. We've got that under recovery programs.
Yes. Okay. All right.
Library has a big budget. Don't we have like 7 million in library account?
In the arts fund?
Yeah.
We have over $7 million in those funds. And as you're aware, the Arts and Culture Commission has a particular budget in terms of working with the arts community and the type of art programming that they do. They most recently had an RFP that they put out for artists to submit their work, and I believe they had set aside $100,000 because of COVID-19 to be able to help artists with some programming. And I think that they're going to be making a decision on that this coming week. I think it's this week.
So then why we want to allocate more money not toward the same?
This is just a menu of options for you to consider, Mr. Mayor. So this is completely a policy issue based on council's...
You want to propose a lower amount?
No, no amount.
You want port zero?
Yeah, because they have the budget. Let them use the money. It's sitting there in the account.
That's a different conversation, because those funds, we would have to have a, I'm sorry, we would have to have a discussion related to the arts funding that's in place that is earmarked to do certain things throughout the years, of which the council can have a discussion related to the piece that you're talking about here, if you do not want to spend funds for Measure S. You can have that conversation. We would bring you information in the coming weeks. We couldn't have that discussion today, I don't think, because we're doing a Measure S discussion. And so we would come back to the City Council if that's what council wanted to do.
I would say, let's, we're just putting the other numbers. So let's earmark the arts funding. Let's see where we end up. If we need to pull that out and talk about maybe funding that through the arts, what is it called, the Urban Arts Fund? I don't know what it's called.
Urban Art Fund, thank you.
Then, you know, we can do that. Let's just see where we end up. I'm curious to see how this shopping list is going to turn out.
South Central?
No.
You say no on South Central?
No, South Central. This is Public Works from their budget of...
What does everyone else say on South Central Avenue Rehab? People complain about roads all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I...
But this is, we have a budget for that?
I...
Put some bike lanes in there, stripe it out a little bit. How about it, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, I mean, no, I was going to say, roads are, I think roads are a perfectly acceptable use of Measure S, because everybody complains about our roads. You're right, and...
As a placeholder, let's put 2 million without committing to it. Let's just see what the numbers look like.
Is that the number that we have?
They want 2.5, which pays for half of the project. The rest comes from gas tax. So we're giving them less than what they asked for, right?
Mr. Mayor, members...
Then you want CCTV also in there? So then you...
I don't know about that. I didn't say CCTV.
I would say to put in the 2.5 for the road. I would take out the CCTV. I mean, it's something we need to do, though, so we need to think about where else we're going to find the money. I don't think we're taking, we're throwing it away as a project. We're just not putting it in.
It's expensive. CCTV is 2.5.
And it's a phased approach for the CCTV. And again, this is not a normal year, based on what we are going through by way of the economy and COVID-19 and its impacts. And this was just to give you a flavor of the options that are out there and the need that is out there within the organization and the community. And so if council is grappling with the infrastructure piece, I would honestly take off the CCTV, of course, the air handler at this point, and the electrical switch gear for City Hall. And if you really want to focus in on the roads, I would suggest, if there is three of you who want to move in that direction, that is fine, but take the rest of the infrastructure piece off the table and not have that conversation based on Measure S. You don't have to do that. And we can figure out funding down the road in the near future in terms of what that phased approach can look like coming, in the upcoming years.
Right. And I, if I could just, you know, I mean, speaking to Mr. Imran, I understand, you know, there's a lot of risk if we're not paying attention to what's going on in our sewers. I mean, we could have, we could have something nasty happen that causes us, you know, to get fined, and who knows what else. So I'm not saying it's not something we should do, but I just think it's the placement of it in the Measure S program.
Do you have a budget for that?
Well, we need to find budget for it, I think. So let's kind of commit to finding budget for it.
Why do you have everything in this?
Yeah, I think we're in agreement. I'm just saying, let's not, we're not saying we're not doing it.
Trying to figure that out.
Where are we with all this?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could just pause for one second, and I just want to get clarification on some of the carryover projects, the existing programs, and any additional new funding, so that we can at least get those out of the way, and then talk about some of the new things. So the first one is the first-time homebuyer program. We have not built that into next year as a carryover of the 750,000, as Mr. Landsafame mentioned. If that is to continue to roll over, we can carry that over. Otherwise, please direct us in where, what you would like to do on that one, so.
Excuse me, we have phone calls, I guess. Maybe we go to our phone calls, please.
That'll give us time to put that, the numbers.
You are, are you connected now? Are we connected? You are on?
Hold on.
Let Mr. Jimyan work his magic on the phone.
Mr. Milano, is this you?
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Milano, you're live.
Thank you very much. Mayor Aydinian, my name is Ferbert Milano. I'm telling you that I'm feeling very optimistic watching today's discussion, that the City Council and staff is well on its way towards discussions that extend beyond changing the financial measures. Slide 24 on housing objectives which are good representation, and the discussion that ensued afterwards was really, really very encouraging. Performance objectives are an effective way of controlling, reporting, and evaluating, and even augmenting public budget outcomes, result in improved quality of life for the city residents. This approach to look at performance objectives has been in practice in many cities and initiatives going with our scorecard. From today's discussion, I suggest how these concepts would work. One, for example, in community development and housing, how many housing units are targeted for development in each of the following three years? Then what is the cost, the target cost for dwelling units? For police, it would be, what is the objective to reduce the heat in our pedestrian traffic danger? And what is the percentage reduction expected in each of the next three years? For... expected in each of the next three years? For primary, it would be, what is the percentage of stroke and cardiac arrest victims that arrive alive at an emergency hospital? And then what is the target of performance for the next three years? Performance works would be how many miles of road construction scheduled for each of the next three years? And then with the traffic, it would be how long should a driver on Red Bull or take from San Fernando to the 134th? How long, how long should that take? For general water and power, it would be, what is the unfunded capital improvement needs in miles of hard lines, for instance? You know, in the last two years, we had 20 watering breaks. So what is the permissible number that you would allow or expect for the next three years? So creating specific non-financial goals gives your handle on the objectives. And then the cost per unit allows us to evaluate the performance of the management of the city, hence in your management. So by a fairly clear objective of performance, you have empirical evidence to evaluate compensation. So with regard to the targets of expenses that are normally part of the general fund, it being re-attached to Measure S, what is the single item that has impacted the general fund so much? Does it now need additional sources of taxation to find, to fund basic general fund expenditures? Well, we all know, and you all agree that you're going to take this on, the element in the room is the exorbitant pension obligation. Had customers' investments returned sufficient to fund the pension obligation, we wouldn't have this problem. But if goals is extremely unrealistic and their performance is unrealistic, not by long shot, especially this year. So I'm really glad that the city council is taking on this very contentious task with the city employee organizations to finally get a handle on the city's budget. So I think the combination of the two is going to be very helpful. And today's presentation was just amazing. So I ask all the city council members, well, we need to tackle this thing in the best way I've seen in many, many years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Next caller.
You're live? You're live?
Hello?
Yes, you're live?
Uh, this is me, mute. Uh, yeah, my name is David Eisenberg. I'd like to comment on the, um, the commercial assistance that you talked about for restaurants. You mentioned alfresco dining, and I think this is a great idea. I have a couple of comments and concerns about that. I think if we set something up, I mean, it, it works really good, but there should be thinking about what do you do when the crisis is over and the restaurants put in all the alfresco dining? Is there a way it could continue? And, and then there's some side effects of that. You know, the, one is the traffic study and the other is the pedestrian plan. And you all talked about the traffic study, but you didn't talk about funding for the pedestrian plan. And I think those tie together. Another thing I'd like you to consider is, you know, giving alfresco dining, you're essentially giving public space, the sidewalk, or part of the parking area, to the businesses. And I think it is reasonable to ask for an exchange. I, I would think something along the lines of, you know, any of these businesses should not be able to put on the public areas, they should not be able to use single-use takeout containers out there. It should be reusable dishes and utensils only. And that should be part of the conditions. And in fact, it should be part of the conditions that there are no, um, um, polystyrene containers sent home from those restaurants that are given this assistance. I think that's a reasonable ask, and it's not, uh, it's not a large expense to go to reusables. So, and, and thank you for all your work on, on doing this.
Thank you. Do we have any other call?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay.
And just so we're clear, the details of all these programs and some of the suggestions the caller just made, we're going to deal with that at a later point. This is just appropriating funding for the general concept of each one of these.
Yes, sir. Mari and Company, do we have a total yet?
20 million, 482,000. So this is, we're right in there. We have about 20 million, 580,000. However, as I was starting to mention prior to taking the phone calls, we need some direction on the first time home buyer. It looks like we have the pool, the year-round aquatics program in here, but we also have the rental rights program, which is a current program. And in order to fund that again next year, we need another 445,000. So those, if we could get direction on the first time home buyer, as well as the rental rights program, and the traffic study, I believe, was another topic.
I don't know whose.
Traffic study, we agreed to, right?
That's what I...
I put that in there. 500?
We need to add that in.
Yeah, that was agreed to.
Okay.
So where does that put us now?
If we have all the items, would you eliminate the blank ones? So this way, it'd be in one page that we can see and compare?
Well, but we, we're not...
Let's hear from Mr. Kasakian, if we can. We're blabbing, and I know he's, he's got some ideas, probably.
Go ahead.
Thank you, council member and mayor.
Can you see these numbers? Can you see these numbers? You can?
Yeah, for the most part, I can.
Yeah.
I can. For the affordable housing, that amount, I'm, I'm fine with. My question to Phil and to staff is, you know, ultimately, I think that we, everything right now should need, should needs to be viewed, and I think everyone is looking at it through that. I feel that way, at least, that we are in an emergency situation. An emergency situation, not necessarily of our own making, but certainly something that we can obviously take action to mitigate, kind of minimize the, the blow to our residents and to our businesses. So in that regard, when, I like the idea of the N-RAP, because it's an emergency, limited amount of assistance. My question is, what's the difference? Why can't all of the other programs that you suggested just be done through the N-RAP? Why not just have N-RAP be the umbrella program?
We, we could. What we would look for, though, is some, what's the word I'm looking for? Elements of eligibility. So if you did put everything into the emergency non-recurring, one of the areas of eligibility would be if you're a student, low-income student, experiencing something. We would just build all of those different things into one program. And then it would depend on, do you do lottery? Do you do first come, first served? Could theoretically have all of them, all of the lottery winners be in one category and not in another, like the student assistance. But we certainly could put them all in there and just call out different elements of eligibility.
I mean, to me, that, that just seems simpler, because I don't, one of the things I, I don't want to do is create a program that is going to have to continue on in perpetuity, right? We, we want to, part of my decision-making thought process here is that we have funds that we should be able to utilize for this specific emergency, at least right now, in the immediate foreseeable future, to help our community. I think it's great to help students, but if we can do it through the N-RAP, let's roll it all into one. I think that the RAD program for the developmentally disabled, obviously also very significant, but if it can be done through N-RAP and, and maybe give those individuals priority. If, on the other hand, you're saying that essentially these are all similar programs, just with different allocations, that's fine. Just in terms of, for instance, the student assistance, is it only for college students? Is it for high school students? Is it for students who are 18 and in high school? Like, how, those are things that I'd be, I'm, I'm interested in, because what I want us to do is to be efficient, to be able to get the funds to those in need as quickly as possible. And I think that if we can pool all of our resources into one specific program for assistance, it, it makes us, in my mind, a little bit more efficient. I may be wrong. Feel free to enlighten me if that's not the case in your proposal, to have it spliced up and diced up into these is, is more. But, you know, in my mind, emergency help, someone comes to us, they say, I can't make my rent, I can't do this, this is what I need. And also, I want to reiterate that in those instances, it's not necessarily always going to, the person is going to the person. For instance, if they can't pay their rent, it should go to landlord. I also like the, the, um, single-family mortgage assistance program. I, I think that that is important as well, because it'll help these families that are being put in this situation because of the COVID-19 pandemic and maybe afraid of losing their homes because they're temporarily out of work, or they don't know when they will be able to return to work as normal. I think that's, that's important. Obviously, again, I mentioned that I think the program for the developmentally disabled is important, but in as much as we can do that through the N-RAP, I'm, I'm for that, because I think some of these families may be facing some unique challenges. The, the Verdugo Wash, well, and, and let's go down to the economic recovery. For the economic recovery program, I thought that the presentation and all of the programs are necessary and well-done. Particularly, I, I, I want to make sure that we do allocate something for childcare support, because I've mentioned this, one of the reasons I'm not able to be there with you right now is because I myself am facing childcare challenges during the daytime, as many families are who have young children of a certain age who require childcare or require some sort of supervision if the parents are working. We had that before the pandemic. Since the pandemic, that has been eliminated. So we need to find other sources. And for those in our community who are in greatest need for that, for them to be able to work and have someone who can provide childcare support, I think that's critical. I do think that we need to include that in there. I liked your entire economic recovery package as it was, and I would fund it all, because I think ultimately, this goes hand in hand with rental assistance and, and landlord assistance and the other programs, the single-family mortgage assistance that you had outlined. To me, again, these are the top priorities, at least for this year. Next year, whatever happens, we have an opportunity to come back and revisit these. But for me, these are paramount. It's essential that we, I understand what circumstances Measure S was presented in, what passed, and why it passed, and where it passed, who supported it, who did not. Ultimately, this, right now, has created a situation where we have to look at how we can provide the most dollar and program assistance to our community, which is why I support also the aquatics program. In terms of the traffic study, I'm for that expense as well, as well as for the study for potentially creating more open, usable open space through the Verdugo Wash. I don't see it as a great expense. I'm hoping that, you know, the study doesn't reach 250,000 dollar mark in terms of what the consultants are required to do, but I think that's important for us to, to at least look into it.
Thank you. So where we are now?
Did we lose him? I think we lost him. He wasn't finished. Looks like he froze up.
Oh.
Councilmember Kasakian, we're going to see if we lost you here.
Currently, we're over budget. While we wait for Arti to get online, we're at 22...
Fine, I also...
Oh, wait.
Always here.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Kasakian.
No, I, I, you know, I, I just do not see how Measure S became the funds through which we're paying for some of these, because the question in my mind, and I'm sure in the minds of others, is if Measure S did not exist, where would this money come from? Essentially, Measure S, I think, was a very prudent, smart decision to put forth by the previous city councils to try and preempt any more taking of money that was generated in Glendale, that wouldn't be coming to Glendale. We now see, you know, county measures, and I'm sure more are going to be coming down the pipeline, that would have increased our tax, our sales tax revenue to the maximum. And I know this is something already staffing council knows, I'm just repeating it for anyone who happens to be sitting at home watching this. And we had to do it. We had to increase our tax, sales tax to the maximum. But that was not money that we were counting on necessarily to be having before. I mean, we would have had to make do without it, and we still would have had capital improvement projects without it. So the question is, where would we have gone, the funding for these South Central Avenue Rehab projects, replacing air handlers, you know, the sanitary sewer project? So that is something I'm grappling with, and I, I am not entirely sold as it is right now.
Thank you. So what's the...
May I?
Yes, please.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to get my head around what we've got here now. So can we go back to look at the housing, all these, all these programs that we've, that we've put together here? So what is the total we have? So we have 6 million for potential land acquisition, for building affordable housing, and then for assistance for renters? What is our total now? Is it the 3, 4, 5 and 1/2 million?
Correct. Uh, plus?
The, the rental assistance for the renters is...
5 and 1/2.
The 5 and 1/2.
And for the landlords, it's?
750,000.
750,000. And then economic recovery, I think it's 3 and 1/4. Is that right?
Well, Mr. Kasakian liked all the programs. We haven't slotted in the, the totals for two of the programs. So if we do that, the entire, the entire, all the programs that were presented by Mr. Lanza Fane for small business recovery and assistance total, 4 million, 650,000.
Okay. I mean, I'm kind of thinking, like, as I think about all these programs, because they're, they're interesting, but for us here, you know, we're seeing them for the first time. It's a little bit hard for me anyway to think, you know, do I want this program or that program? I'd rather kind of, and I think maybe this is where council member Kasakian was going, is can we kind of think about big buckets and then have community development go away and, you know, come back soon, but have us kind of then drill down and talk about, okay, exactly how do we want to allocate? Like, because at this point, we're just trying to get high level, right? So if we say, you know, a certain amount is going to be for housing assistance, 5 and 1/2 million or whatever it came out to, certain amount for economic recovery, whatever, 3 and 1/2 million, the park, 3 million, now can we, would, would the rest of my colleagues be, be okay with just let's get the big categories? And then we can kind of come back and say, do we like the life rap better, or do we like the, you know, whatever, the, I can't even say these things, MLFIA, or the, you know, N-RAP, or the PIF? We could kind of come back and allocate that. Would that be okay?
We could totally do that, which is probably a better thing to do. So we appropriate a chunk of money, and then we can work at the details as to how we want to allocate that within the different funds, right?
Absolutely.
And we can, if... Oh, no, I was just going to say, we can use kind of what we have here as our, as our rough indicator, right? And, and maybe we have to pare back a little bit, and we're not necessarily sure which, which program bucket that goes into. So if...
That's what we should do. I agree with that.
Okay.
We've got a general, general penciled-in amount without the details, and we, because that'll be a longer discussion as to how we're gonna, you know, do we combine, like, Mr. Kasakian, do we combine it all to N-RAP? Do we split it out into different categories? As long as we've got the chunk of money reserved for our budget purposes for this coming month, then we can work on the details together.
Right. And, and some of the things we've called out, like the aquatics...
Right, some are...
Park, Verdugo Wash, traffic study, those we've called out specifically, so we can kind of hold on to those. But, yeah, okay.
The other piece that, that we need clarification on from council is the rental rights program administration, which you all approved last year, and it still continues, and that's 445,000. We would ask for that appropriation in 2021 as well. And...
I think we have to do that.
Yeah.
I think we have to do.
If we're, if you're looking for guidance from us on that specific amount, and if we haven't spoken out, at least, I know council member Najarian just said we have to do that. I, I second that as well. It's... It's a commitment that was made. I think it's prudent for us to at least hold up our end of our promise and what we promised to those residents. I support it.
What's the total now?
Four hundred and forty-five thousand for that one. And in total, I'm not sure.
The whole program.
I'm not sure if we're complete with all the discussion yet.
But if you were to take it in terms of those buckets.
But if we're in those buckets, yeah, I think we're a little over, actually. First-time homebuyer, did we want to get clarification on that as well?
First-time homebuyer, we don't have clarification on, and I don't, not sure we have three of you comfortable with moving forward with the South Central Rehab Project. I just want to make sure, because we have that on there. I don't think we have three of you who are comfortable with that at this point. So first-time homebuyer.
We leave it for next year because we are reaching very few people where the same money can spread to renters will help better, in my opinion.
To keep it in the bucket of the rental assistance, Mr. Mayor? Is that what you're suggesting?
I don't want to be part of this.
Saying don't allocate any.
Don't allocate.
Don't allocate anything.
Got it.
So the budget we have to work with is twenty million, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, then?
Without the South Central or with?
That's what we have to work with.
Oh, that's what we have to work with. But what do we have in terms of what council has provided feedback on?
So let me go through it. Can you guys scroll down as I, as I read off, start at the top of the spreadsheet, please? So we have four hundred and forty-five thousand for the rental rights program, six million for affordable housing development, 6.25 million for the assistance programs for renters as well as homeowners. Economic recovery for commercial is three million, six hundred and fifty thousand. For a new park, three million dollars. And aquatics program, year-round aquatics program is 582,000. Citywide traffic study is 500, the Verdugo Wash, 250,000, and South Central Rehab Project, 2 million. So as we add it up, we are a little over 22 million, 677.
So how much is our budget?
Twenty million, 582.
So why we don't take that South Central off, and then we'll be right in the, where we have to be? Take off that 2 million, and we will be 20 million.
And we, are there other funds to backfill that in other?
We will have to.
Gas tax or?
There is no gas tax for that piece of it. We have the allocation for gas tax, but it's a project that needs to get done, and we'll have to get back around a table and figure that piece of it out.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
Although I'm not okay with it, but since my colleagues, they like it, I don't want to see out of 20 million, 6 million allocated for affordable housing. That's too little, but however, I will go along with this.
Well, if I could, if I could, yeah, I mean, we're in this emergency, as Councilmember Kosakian mentioned, we're allocating a lot of money to economic recovery and to renters. So I think we're doing a lot that we wouldn't otherwise need to be doing. I think that's the world we're in, and we're still holding 6 million for affordable housing, and we have quite a bit that we're carrying over, right? We have the 11 million, and we have the.
Seven point nine.
Seven point nine. So I think, I think it feels like a good balance. Maybe you don't agree.
And if we get a good deal, we can decide as a council to go for it and commit next year's money.
Exactly.
That's a promise.
If you get a good deal, yeah. I mean, you know, I think we're always looking for good deals.
Pretty soon, property value is going to go so down and will be such a chaos in the city and everywhere. I mean, not in the city, but however, we have to be ready for it. Anyway, thank you. Is there anything else we are, or we are done with this?
We are over by almost 100,000 on this.
How much?
Almost 97,000.
Can we, can we perhaps, I know that Councilmember Devine made the very good suggestion to allocate, was it, 3 million dollars for potential new park acquisition? Can we perhaps reduce that by 500,000 or whatever?
Then 1 million, I think if we put, Mr. Mayor, if we even put 2 million or 1 million towards the park, and that would give us an extra million or two to work with.
Thank you. I think that, I think that would make a big difference in some of these other programs.
I'm okay with that.
So we'll put a million in that, and then they'll give us a little bit of room.
Three million parks coming to one.
So the total.
And we don't have to spend that now. We don't even have to decide, or do we?
We don't have to decide.
No, anything that would be related to any of these items are going to, outside of aquatics, and of course, the rental rights program, because the administration's already happening, all the other pieces would come to council for approval.
Yeah, and I think that it's good to have that reserve amount left, or I don't want to call it the reserve, the reserve after discussion, and I think people have a very specific understanding of it. To have that extra money, that if we see that there's a shortfall in one of these emergency assistance programs, we can inject some additional funding into it.
Yeah.
And remember.
I agree.
If I could just, remember that this is all based on an assumption that we're going to get these sales tax revenues in. So we don't know, we don't know. So we have to be cautious on how we, you know, quarter by quarter, how we allocate this.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you always have the ability to redirect the funding, change programs, as long as we haven't committed it in expenditure of some sort or a contract.
So basically, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation to you today in terms of the items we need to come back to council with, in terms of follow-up. The robust conversation on Measure S, which has been, I think, very helpful to us in terms of what needs to happen and information we need to bring back to council in terms of the program piece. The next time we will have this conversation regarding budget will be June 2nd in the evening, at which point the council will have the opportunity to look at the budget one more time and hopefully adopt the budget as recommended in the last three sessions. With that, we can answer any more questions that you may have, sir.
I think.
Well, I just, I mean, I still have this concern, you know, we talked about these, these, you know, furloughs and these other things, right? And, you know, I still think that we do need to look at more of an austerity budget. So what's going to happen in June when we come back together, we're still looking at this budget? What's happening with, with, you know, those numbers that we just discussed at the beginning of this meeting for, you know, what we could save with the furloughs, with, you know, eliminating, you know, increases during the year?
We have the opportunity to come back and make changes, though, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, during the course of the year, as the budget is a living and changing and evolving thing, we're going to have a lot of known, unknowns become known moving forward.
Yeah.
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as we've had this discussion in the last few sessions regarding much of what has been presented to you in terms of the assumptions related to the revenues coming to the city of Glendale, it's uncharted territory, and I know you all know this, we all know this. And what we ask is, is for you to allow this process to take its course, for us to come to you in June, for you to adopt the budget with the understanding that you are going to dip into reserves and take the reserves down to 30%, and understanding that we will be before you, monthly, quarterly, providing you with updated information. And if things are not looking good, as Mr. Kosakian said, and as others have said up at the dais, as well as myself, I'll be the first to come before you and ask for you to allow me to make certain cuts and for you to make those determinations in terms of what that's going to look like. Whether that is service level reductions, whether that is not doing step increases, which we would have to meet and confer about, whether that is furloughs or all of the above, I would be the first one to have that conversation with you and provide you with some recommendations and see what your thoughts are. But again, at this point, I don't believe that that's where we need to go. We may need to go there in August or September. I'm hoping that we don't, but we may need to go there, and if we need to go there, we will do it in a methodical and strategic manner.
Thank you, my colleagues, city council members and the staff. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I guess nobody wants to leave, so what can I do? There is no second. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. We are adjourned at 1:41 PM.